Good evening, we're going to call the meeting to order. Today is Monday, April 25th, 2022. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education meeting. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we have our roll call, I'd just like to let everybody know Mrs. Chanley is not going to be present this evening. She has a personal commitment. So we have Dr. Lehman will be filling in for her. May we have a roll call?
Ms. Arminio.
Here.
Ms. Belko.
Here.
Ms. Biermann.
Here.
Ms. Bora.
Here.
Mr. Chiarelli.
Here.
Mrs. Fabiano.
Here.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Here.
Mrs. Ratner.
Here.
Mr. Rutske. Ms. Kirby.
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum present this evening. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted April 15th, 2022 at all schools on the district website at HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW.MONRO.K12.NJ.us, the Home News Tribune, the Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Okay, our next item is the approval of minutes. We have our minutes from our public board of education meeting, March 15th, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Kirby, that was Ms. Biermann moving and Mrs.?
Bora.
Ms. Bora's second?
Yes.
Okay, our next one is a closed session meeting, March 15th, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve?
Wait, did we approve? I don't, I think we just had a motion and a second. I didn't.
Yeah, I said all those in favor.
I did say aye, but okay. Go ahead.
Could I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I abstain.
Okay.
I recuse from the section regarding superintendent search.
Okay. Anyone else? No, okay, and those are approved. Our next item is our student board members' report. However, I don't see them here this evening, so we will move on to our presentation, our public hearing of the 2022-23 final budget. Dr. Lehman and Mr. Gorski.
Thank you. So tonight, we were going to present the final budget presentation. There have been no changes since the preliminary budget presentation, so we're just going to go through, share the information again, and then at the end of the presentation, if the board members have any questions, feel free to ask. So again, we want to thank the Board of Education for their support in the development of the budget, the finance committee. We have our mission and vision statement. Again, nothing's changed since the first presentation of this. The executive summary basically kind of describes the constraints and some of the factors that we focused on during the development of the budget. We all know that we have growing enrollment based on the new demographic report, maybe not as much as we expected, but we still have some growing enrollment. We have unhoused students. And then we also have changing curriculum and things that we kind of merged into as priorities for this budget. So here we go, aging facilities, that's one. Sorry, Mr. Tags. There we go. All right, so aging facilities is one of our focuses as we look towards planning for the budget. We know we have some HVAC projects we need to work on. We have some stopgap projects that we're focusing on, so that's one of our focuses. Increased enrollment, like I spoke about, the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, much of our work in synchronizing our curriculum documents with the 2020 standards is in progress. Some of it will be also completed this summer. We always focus on our student teacher ratio. We want to make sure we have the strongest educational programs we can for our students, and that starts in the classroom. So maintaining the right and consistent student teacher ratios is one of our focuses. And then the tax impact on the community, that's certainly a high priority for us, both administratively and as a board. I'm not sure why it's, there we go. I was double clicking. So our process, as we've described before, is, starts in usually the fall. Sometimes, if we can have our priorities meeting with the board in the summer, we'd like to start it even earlier. That starts with our budget philosophy. And then we begin to take a look at our current and our active demographic studies. We look at current class enrollments, real live data as to how many students are actually sitting in classrooms. We review our staffing needs, and all of that kind of merges together to give the picture of what we're looking at staffing-wise. Then we begin to, with that as a backbone, develop our budgets. That starts at the school level. The building principals, the supervisors work together collaboratively and look at either classroom or building-based needs. The supervisors are looking at curricular needs. A K-12 lens is taken. We have a sequence, kind of a refreshment sequence, that we kind of go through to make sure we're not, we don't have a heavy lift. We kind of replace curriculum documents year by year, so it's a consistent expense as we move through. After we kind of go through that piece, and they spend a lot of time working with me, kind of going through some of those screening processes and kind of making sure there's consistency amongst all the buildings, we move into budget defense rounds. Those budget defense rounds are inclusive of the superintendent, the business administrator, as well as all of the supervisors and principals, and we do it in terms of groups. Upper elementary, primary schools, we do the middle school, we do technology, we do PPS, and we do the high school. And we look for consistency across the board. We look to make sure the materials are appropriate to what those building needs are, and we really kind of prioritize, based on the wants, what are the needs, and we merge them together into our budget philosophy that we kind of spoke about earlier. Then we kind of wait, and we're in a holding pattern as Mr. Gorski kind of pulls everything together. And in March, we get the governor's budget address. That's where he announces the state aid. That's a piece of the puzzle that kind of goes into what the potential tax impacts are on our residents. So that's the state aid awardment. And then we were, beginning of the month, adopting our tentative budget. That's where we kind of discussed, you know, the finished product, per se, presented it to the public, has the public an opportunity to kind of take a look at what the priorities are, where the funds are being allocated, and then there was a public hearing, and now we sit here today with the final budget with another public hearing. So some of the things that are included within this budget, we have 19 new personnel, and that ranges from special education positions, specifically ICR resource positions. We have some self-contained teachers and support staff. Every self-contained class has professionals that are bundled with that classroom to support the students that would be in there. We have some bus drivers. We have a nurse. We know the nurses were strained this year, and we were strained going into COVID, and the COVID put an additional burden on our nursing staff, so we plan to support our nurses with another teacher. We have a Spanish teacher included. We also have another custodian included as well. Instructional-wise, we have some textbook allocations in there. We have technology, and that's district-wide technology. And then we have our yearly replacement for the 654-passenger vans and the 220-passenger, or 654-passenger buses and the 220-passenger vans. That's our replacement cycle for our in-house transportation. Specific in terms of instruction and programming, we have our, again, the continued alignment to the 2020 NJ SLS standards, New Jersey Student Learning Standards. We do a lot of work, like I said, in the summer. That's where curriculum writing really takes place. The teachers work with our supervisors. We update our online curriculum documents, and everything is accessible to the public through our website. We do, we have a multi-tier system of support that is a comprehensive program that supports students that may be struggling, whether it's academically or emotionally. Each building, K-12, has a process in place where we can support teachers, support students, and support families, so we have that as a priority within the budget. Our in-school and after-school support for students, that's specifically at the middle school and the high school. Again, I spoke about this earlier, our textbook replacement and adoptions. We're looking at specifically for next year, a full K-5 math adoption. That is a large kind of project to take over. Hopefully, in the recommended piece, and we're going to talk about a curriculum next week, it's going to be a similar program that we have in place, so there won't be a lot of change for the teachers. But again, it's a refresh for us, and it keeps with our refreshment schedule. We're doing an eighth grade social studies, a textbook adoption, precalculus textbooks, and our application development program is going to get an updated textbook. So consistent with the budget is all of our existing programs, all of our existing plans were able to be met. We're not reducing or cutting anything from our current budget. And that's something that's, you know, with our growing population and our managing staff and our growing staff and things, it's important that we maintain our programs, and that's something we were able to do. Mr. Gorski?
Thank you, Dr. Lehman. Some specifics about what's included in the budget from a capital improvement perspective. Monroe Board of Education has a number of aging facilities. Even some of the newer ones have machinery and hardware that is beyond useful life and in need of replacement. And the objects that we were able to appropriate in this year's budget is the middle school. We're going to replace the Performing Arts Center HVAC equipment. It's beyond its useful life. It failed a couple of years ago, leading to a brief mold issue in the school. We want to prevent that from ever reoccurring, and that's $1.6 million of cost. As most of that is equipment, it will be leased purchased so that its useful life and its financing will match a five-year payment schedule. We also are doing stopgap interior renovations at the middle school, the Home Economics Lab 141, to create additional special needs classrooms to serve the increasing special needs student population. That's about $150,000. It's going to be performed by in-house staff as much as possible to save money. And at the high school, there are stopgap interior renovations of the graphic arts room, G156, to create two gen ed classrooms to increase student population. That's a cost of $50,000. Again, that's going to be performed in-house to the extent possible. There is a laundry list of other facility needs that could not be incorporated into this year's budget because of limitations on revenue. These were the priority items that were discussed at committee and amongst the administration and the board, and, you know, we still have a lot more pending for next year. Where does the money come from? Unfortunately, the majority of Monroe's revenue still comes from local taxes. 83.35 percent, that's down from a high of about 88 percent a few years ago. Fund balance is one of the areas that we can control managerially by managing the budget, by following smart procurement methods, purchasing consortium state contract purchases, and in other means. So the more fund balance you create by not spending all of the appropriations that are in the prior year's budget, by maximizing revenues and exceeding what was in the budget, all flows over to excess surplus. This year's budget also has a really attractive addition in the debt service fund, where we're bringing about $480,000 of excess surplus over to reduce the tax levy because of the refunding that was done a few years ago. Not only is the interest in principal being budgeted in lesser amounts because of the refunding, but there was leftover monies from the anticipated soft costs that's being returned to the taxpayers this year. Tuition from Jamesburg, about 3 percent. Transportation fees from jointures and other things. Miscellaneous revenue, which has been depleted. We used to have a lot more interest income on bond monies above the arbitrage amount that used to transfer to the general fund, and interest rates used to be in the 6 percent range when I was buying CDs, managing the portfolio at that time. We maximize extraordinary aid and Medicaid reimbursement that's required. State aid has grown, it's about 6.7 percent, and federal aid is a disappointing nine-tenths of a percent. And the next slide shows how the general fund tax levy is calculated, and it all begins with a look back at the 21-22 general fund tax levy. There's adjustments for enrollment, which Monroe is not eligible for. The state has their own trend lines for enrollment, and although we are growing at the faster clip than most school districts, we were not eligible for an enrollment adjustment. Used to be that you could submit a demographic report and challenge that. That's no longer the case. That changed about 10 years ago, so there's nothing that can be done with that. Healthcare costs is another adjustment to the cap. Our healthcare costs are under the threshold where we would be eligible to seek cap relief because our costs are well-contained. So basically, it's just a flat 2 percent increase on the general fund levy from the preceding year. That's an increase of $2.2 million. To put that in perspective, it sounds like a lot, but that doesn't, it barely covers all the salary increases that are contractual obligations in the budget, so this gets eaten up very quickly. Key factors on Monroe's state aid, there's two types of aid. The first one, and the largest type of state aid, is equalization aid that's designed to support a district's adequacy budget. That's a hypothetical model of how a school district should run. They calculate an adequacy budget, then there's a local fair share calculation, and if the local fair share calculation is greater than your adequacy budget, which it is in Monroe's case, you're not eligible for equalization aid, and you're asked to go about funding your adequacy budget on your own. Next is categorical aid. As you would expect, this is based on the different categories of aid. Special education aid is the most prominent one. Transportation aid is another one. Security aid is a third. We maximize those with having the most efficient bus fleet in the county. We've had that for now, for decades in Monroe. We are among the most efficiently-run transportation fleet in the state, and that's why we have a significant number, an increase in state aid for transportation aid, we'll get to in a minute. General fund is, state aid is only about 7 percent of total revenue. It's one of the lowest state aid per pupil ratios in the county. And the next slide, number 15, shows the breakdown. Special education aid grew from 5 million to 6.7 million. That's where the state appropriated all of the growth in state aid in that one category. Security aid is the same as last year. Transportation aid is $2.7 million, which is a direct award because of our efficiency rating. And overall, state aid grew $1.7 million, or 22 percent, from last year. There's a couple handouts. One of them is the comparative sources of revenue, known as Schedule A. What's noteworthy from Schedule A is, if you look at fund balance, it was able to grow $6.7 million for '22-23, up from 5.1 the year before. That's a $1.6 million increase in general fund surplus. Plus, as I mentioned, the debt service fund surplus grew $478,000 above last year, so that's almost $2 million of surplus that's contributing to the balancing of the budget. We're making use of transfer of funds from the IPID insurance renewal surplus, $325,000. The policy changed on that, and the money can be transferred back into the general fund. Unemployment fund was funded by the district years ago. It's running a little bit rich from collections. We're self-funded for unemployment, and it's recommended to transfer $100,000 back from that fund. Other revenue again is tuition. Jamesburg tuition is 275 students, budgeted for the '22-23 school year at a tuition rate of $15,500 per pupil. That's $4,262,500. That exceeds the amount that's required in the agreement between the districts. And we talked about state aid and federal aid. Looks like a significant drop compared to the previous year, but the '21-22 school year had a lot of COVID grants that the district took full advantage of, so there's a comparative drop, but we're still maximizing everything we're able to apply for. Also, there's a Schedule B where we put together a state aid history schedule, and you could see the growth and early declines in state aid awards over time. Slide number 17 shows budget appropriation considerations. As Dr. Lehman correctly stated, much of the spending in this district is driven by student enrollment. And in this chart tells the whole story here. This comes directly from our audited ASSA application for state school aid, except for the last column, which was recently updated with an enrollment projection from Ross Hayburn Associates. Where does the money go? 52.83 percent is direct on instruction. However, most of the benefits section is attributable to teachers and instructional staff, so if that was in the gold column, that would increase that number probably in the 60 percent range. Athletics, co-curricular, debt service is dropping every year. Administrative costs are 3 percent of the budget. Unfortunately, one of the horns that we love to toot is from the taxpayer guide to educational spending that breaks out school districts by size and category. Monroe has always compared very favorably to other school districts for administrative costs and also cost per pupil, which has been dropping for our district, but that report is delayed because of COVID and other reasons, so we don't have that data yet. Hopefully, we'll bring it to a future finance committee meeting. Capital projects is an area where we'd love to spend more. We have a grant coordinator who's outreach and applying for grants brings in about 1 percent of spending, and it's funded by federal and state programs. And transportation's about 5 percent. We have a comparative appropriation detail known as Schedule C, and if you're looking at that schedule, you'll see some analytical anomalies comparing last year, which was very much impacted by COVID, to our projected normal year coming forward in '22-23. Again, Dr. Lehman may have mentioned this, what we're projecting next year in the '22-23 budget is what we hope to be a normal school year, not impacted by closures and COVID, and we can get back to normal fiscal performance. So you'll see some anomalies and comparisons, and some numbers dropping and increasing, and that's because of that reason. The district also has engaged in a plethora of cost savings, excuse me, from shared services and other cost savings initiatives. This is significant. It's all listed and required to be in a district's user-friendly budget, which we will post to the website tomorrow, assuming it gets approved tonight. And I would encourage you to compare our cost savings from this sheet in the user-friendly budget to other school districts, just to see how aggressive we are in trying to save money wherever possible. As we mentioned in the preliminary hearing, one of the most attractive new shared service arrangements was with the municipality, where Mrs. Arminio negotiated a shared service agreement for the upgrade of the football turf field and the track field around it, which was beyond its useful life and in danger of being shut down by the inspectors. The township is going to reimburse the school district for the full cost of that initiative, and it should not impact instruction or athletics whatsoever. And what factors influence the tax rate? We heard about appropriations, which is spending. We heard about revenues. What hits the tax rate? And the biggest variable that affects the tax rate is, aside from state aid, ratables. Ratables is the aggregation of property values in Monroe Township, both commercial and residential, that absorbs the school tax levy and also the municipal tax levy, which is separate from our budget. As those ratables grow and as more industries move in Monroe, and mainly residents move into Monroe, there's more folks sharing in the levy, and then everybody's individual rate is suppressed. Last year, ratables grew by 3.11 percent, $244 million. That's significant, and that's why last year's budget had a tax decrease for the first time in many years. This year's growth in the ratables was still impressive at 1.77, $143 million, and that was influential in suppressing the rate, which we'll get to in the next slide. And this is the final tax slide. It shows a four-year comparison of the tax increase and the dollar tax increase on the average assessed home in Monroe Township. Last year, there was a 1.6 cent decrease, or $52.51, on the average assessed home. For the '22-23 budget, it's a quarter of a cent decrease, or $9, on an average assessed home of $331,952, which is provided by the township. This is two consecutive years of school tax rate decreases, which is impressive. I've worked with a number of superintendents over the years, and we've had goals and conversations on how to reduce the taxes and provide tax relief. And with the value of a penny in the school district, it's very hard to do, especially when the ratable situation is not as favorable as it's been in the last two years. But this is also impressive, because as Dr. Lehman said, there are no cuts to any existing programs or services in the budget. We're adding 19 new staff, new buses, new vans. We're upgrading the facilities through equipment replacements in HVAC and interior renovations, and we're still able to do so with a very slight tax decrease to the community. So this is really perfect harmony with satisfaction of school programs and instructions, community taxation as best as possible. Although the taxpayer guide to educational spending is delayed, there was a report that was in the newspaper comparing all of the '22-23 state aid awards by school districts. And Monroe, in order of rank of the 577 school districts in the state, ranked 64 out of 577 for the highest percent increase in state aid. And I like to think that's because of the efforts, and I've heard this from legislators, that Monroe has made its concern known to the legislators. All of the testimony that has occurred over the years between the Senate and the Assembly budget hearings, our legislation, the community efforts to bus people down to Trenton to support legislation that was prepared in-house, has got our message across, and I was told that that was impactful in why our state aid percentage increase was higher than normal. Certainly, it's not satisfactory, and it could be considered a dead cat bounce because it was so low, and any increase seems proportionally higher than it actually feels. That's true. The relief hopefully will come with the new commission that's being formed at the state level to address a new funding formula, because even at full funding under S2, which is going to come three years from now, the consequence will not be felt in reducing taxes enough. We need a new funding formula. There's been some great ideas that we discussed at the Finance Committee. Certainly, we would encourage the community and the board to stay aggressive in fighting for fair state aid. And if that's, at this point, I would like to read the budget resolution. We'll need a first and a second, and then the board will deliberate, and the administration will answer any questions that the board members have on the budget. And then it will open up for a public hearing, which is the public's opportunity to comment on the budget, just the budget. So it is recommended to the members of the Monroe Township Education, Board of Education, that the '22-23 general fund budget be adopted in the amount of $134,834,78, and a general fund local tax levy in the amount of $112,427,989, and a special revenue fund in the amount of $1,336,653, and a debt service budget in the amount of $10,630,867, and a debt service local tax levy in the amount of $9,909,715, whereby the '22-23 budget totals $146,770,998. And be it further resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education to transfer $2,330,570 from unassigned fund balance to reserved excess surplus designated for future years expenditures, thus reducing the calculations COVID-related provision from 4 percent of 2021 general fund expenditures to its traditional 2 percent requirement. And whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has been notified of state aid amounts, and whereas such state aid amounts are for the '22-23 categorical special education aid in the amount of $6,744,811. eight hundred and eleven dollars, for the twenty-two, twenty-three categorical security aid, one hundred and three thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, and for the twenty-two, twenty-three categorical transportation aid, two million seven hundred and fifty-three thousand nineteen dollars, and for the twenty-two, twenty-three, the debt service aid is two hundred and forty-two thousand nine one seven. And whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has estimated a state aid amount pursuant to application, and for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the estimated extraordinary aid is three hundred ninety-seven thousand four eighty-four. And whereas Policy Number Six Four Seven One and NJAC Six A Twenty-three A Seven Point Three provides that the Board of Education shall establish in the annual school budget a maximum expenditure amount that may be allotted for travel and expense reimbursement for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, now therefore be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education hereby establishes the school district travel maximum for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year at the tenant of sum of one hundred sixty-five thousand five hundred dollars. And be it further resolved that the school business administrator shall track and record these costs to ensure that the maximum amount is not exceeded. And be it further resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education authorizes the transfer of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund iPad balance slash iPad insurance fund to provide revenues for the lease obligations refresh of high school instructional devices. And be it further resolved that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education authorize and approve a withdrawal from the fund balance for unemployment claims in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. And be it further resolved that the board transfer two hundred thousand dollars of anticipated retained earnings from the proprietary Falcon Care Fund as a revenue source in the twenty-two, twenty-three general fund budget. Whereas due to consistent student enrollment growth, facility needs, and other priorities set forth in the board's budget philosophy resolution, the board is budgeting to maximum spending authority, also known as CAP. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary file the required documents with the Executive County Superintendent of Schools.
Motion.
Second.
Second was Mr. Nikotinsky. Thank you.
Yes.
And now turn it over to board for any questions.
Mr. Chiarella?
So I want to congratulate the, our Business Administrator and our, and our administration for two tax rate decreases in a row, which I don't think has ever been done before, not while I've been on the board. So that's phenomenal. And to have no cuts to programs and services is also great. What I'd like to know is what our total, for the edification of the public, what our total budget is in millions of dollars? Hundred and forty?
Madam, the, the total budget for all funds equals one hundred forty-six million seven hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Thank you. And now, what do we, can, do you know off the top of your head what we send to the state, what, from, from a tax standpoint?
I do not, but it's significantly more than we receive.
Okay. And then we receive back seven million, what, and change? But I know the last time I checked, it was well over forty million that we sent in. So I just want to say something quickly, because I think we're underrepresented. So I do agree with you, Mr. Gorski, that we've made a lot of noise and things like that, but I don't necessarily think that our legislators have heard us to the point where we need to be heard. The other night, Senator Greenstein was at the Senior Center. She was asked about why she refuses to meet with this board and go over our needs and the things that we're looking for, to go over the, you know, the various things that we've been asking for forever. What she told the residents there was that we were just asking her to come over so that she could help us explain the funding formula, and she wasn't so great at understanding that. So she tried to create a different venue for us to be able to understand the funding formula. I want to say to Senator Greenstein and to our residents, we understand our funding formula. We're getting destroyed by our funding formula. What we don't have and what we need is proper representation. We don't, we don't have anyone in Trenton fighting for us. And so that's really where we're at. For us to send over forty million dollars and get only seven million dollars back, and then for eighty-three percent of the tax, the, the, the rest of the funding coming from our residents, that's abominable. It's an abomination, and we, we don't, we just don't have representation. Thank you.
Ms. Bierman?
And also during Finance Committee, we had a conversation about, not to be Debbie Downer, but that this is very, at best, with inflation rising and revenue prospects not so great, that something happens, and we are sitting on that precipice of having to consider cuts in programming and cuts in non-mandatory type services or courtesy things, et cetera, that we're not just on a clean path here, that we're sitting very tentatively.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Bierman makes a great point that was discussed at Finance Committee. This, this school district is very sensitive to inflation. We cannot pass the cost increases on to customers. We have a set budget, as you just heard, at the beginning of the year, and then we have to make the best with what we have facing us. We did an analysis we talked about at Finance Committee for fuel costs and also food costs in the cafeteria fund, and they're both shockingly increasing. Food service is one area where we can, the board can consider price increases. Monroe is among the lowest in the county. But other than that, the budget's fixed from the beginning of the year, and if, if prices rise, you have to make do with less. And that'll be a challenge for administration, it appears, coming forward this year. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Mrs. Ratner?
So two questions, I guess. First, just because you brought up the food services. I know this year, there was a nationwide grant, statewide grant, which gave meals for all students. Did we lose revenue because of that, or was it, were all our costs covered by that grant? I'm just wondering if that's something that we might get back once we are paying for meals again, or was it all covered by the grant?
Profitable.
Okay.
There, there was a couple of grants. We had grants that the food service director applied for, for equipment upgrades. But the largest use of stimulus money for school nutrition programs was the reimbursement rate increases to the program directly and the free lunch program for, for all students. That absolutely hit the spot where it was most needed, or you would have seen school nutrition programs go belly up across the state. So Monroe made use of that. We also, as we discussed at Committee, appreciated the fact that we were providing free lunch to many people in need. That's of paramount importance. But to Ms. Ratner's comment, the food service program solvency is directly related to all of the stimulus money that went through the state of New Jersey and increased the reimbursement rates and allowed us to get grants for new equipment and so on. So that was a life-saving infusion of money for that program.
Okay. And then my other question, and this sort of goes along with what Ms. Bierman had just mentioned. I know that you had mentioned we're moving money out of surplus to help cover some of our, our current costs. I guess knowing that right now, you know, things are where they are, if we hit a rough spot next year, do we have enough in surplus that we're going to be able to handle that? I know there's no crystal ball, but you know, is there a minimum amount that's considered safe in surplus, and will we still be there even by moving the money out of it this year that we are doing?
Madam, the, the previous calculations were a two percent requirement for excess surplus. They increased it to four percent during COVID. The audit as of June thirty, twenty-one calculated separation at, at four percent, which decreased the excess surplus number. We're now putting it back. I recommend it to the Finance Committee to do a resolution that was incorporated in the, the item tonight, to reduce it back to two percent and appropriate that money back to excess surplus. I'm comfortable that we can live on two percent in segregated emergency surplus. And with our budget size, we do have some flexibility if, if inflation hits in certain categories to move money via board transfer. But what's, what's concerning is, and we discussed this at Finance also, is that this district has very heavy appropriation needs. We go through an extensive budget defense round process, where this year, everything that the principals, supervisors, the directors have had a pent-up demand for over the years, everything that our facility director, our transportation director has needed, was justified and passed the budget defense rounds, and optimistically went into the initial budget, which once we determined what our actual revenues were, proved to be thirteen point five million dollars over our revenues. So that left us in a very precarious situation to have to eliminate some of the new items that we were considering and desperately need in certain areas. Our reserves are draining down. Unemployment money, we're taking a hundred thousand from, the iPad surplus, we're taking three twenty-five. And a lot of the areas of comfort in the budget in previous years have been depleted. So my concern is not so much living with the two percent excess surplus calculation, but it, it is that we, we desperately need an infusion of new revenues, as Mr. Chiarella said, because you heard of sustainable farming. Sustainable budgeting is becoming challenging in Monroe, because we just do not have enough revenue coming in to meet growing needs and facility needs for, for the programs that we, this board and other boards have done such a fantastic job in establishing.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Bor?
Again, for Mr. Gorski, I have a question about the, this is the budget that's for twenty-two, twenty-three, and I see a few capital projects that have been approved. My understanding were they start in the summer? So do, are we able to use that money? Twenty-two, twenty-three budget starts September, or it starts earlier?
Excellent question. The twenty-two, twenty-three budget, the district can begin appropriating monies by cutting purchase orders as early as this budget is approved by the county and state, which should be in May. So once we get that determination from the state that our budget has been approved at that level, we can then begin committing appropriate encumbrances against the next year's budget. We can begin the construction projects that we need to get a jump on.
So all of these projects will happen over the summer? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else? Ms. Arminio?
Yes. I'd just like to, that was extensive and appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Gorski. And thank you to our staff, our, our school staff, you know, to always be, being considerate of our costs. But that, that's also what concerns me. For no control of our own, as Mr. Chiarell and I always sort of say, it needs to be said every time. Every time we spend millions of dollars a month, we need to remind people why we are doing that. And most of it, we have been able to sustain good, good education, good academics, good scholarship, and athletics, and so on and so forth. However, we are still burdened with the fact that we have no control over the kind of rapid and somewhat underestimated and underplanned construction. We, we have to provide for our children, and it's something that this board has done for the twenty years that I've been coming to, to the meetings and the nine years that I have been here. However, our hands are tied, and we are compelled to do something without our ability to control it. So something I know, I say all the time and still needs to be said. What I'd like to do, Mr. Gorski, is just sort of go through some of the things. While we say that, we say we, we are not raising taxes, but we are raising our budget. I think the, the public needs to understand that. There's a difference between not pushing out taxes to our community, but we still have to understand that two percent every year is multiplying the cost of our budget. And, Mr. Gorski, you said that, so correct me, our two percent cap this year is adding two point two million increase to our budget from last year. Is that correct?
That is correct, and the point you made about it compounding every year is, is correct.
Correct. Okay. And the not, and, and we had been fortunate, and I know Mr. Nikotinsky and I talked about this last year, when he was Vice President and I was President, that we were concerned about what would not come our way this year for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Fortunately, there are still some grants and funding, but however, these are non-renewable necessarily, correct? So some of the monies that we were able to get for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget are not earmarked for a future, as we know, you know. Is that correct? So what we depended on for this next budget may not be available for the next year.
It's a good point. It's always true. If you look at the special revenue fund, the state budget guidelines require that the twenty-two, twenty-three budget be put together with a fifteen percent decrease from the prior year revenues, out of conservatism, because there's always that insecurity of how much federal and state money is going to come through those grants. State aid, as we know, is very volatile. There was a year where we had our state aid award. Teachers were hired, the budget was set. We were halfway through the school year, and we lost one point five million dollars because the state had a budget crisis and clawed back the money. That was very challenging at the time. So, yes, conservatism and budgeting is very important and, and.
Well, so, so my concern is, we can be very happy that we are not raising taxes, and it's great, and that, that is never something that I'd want to do. But I think the community still needs to be vigilant about our moving forward and where we're going to get the funds. Every year, I feel like we have to just tense up and startle over again and be fearful of how we're going to maintain what we are doing. So, you know, I, I think we have to be careful going forward of some of maybe, some of the spending that we haven't seen yet, and, and how, and us to be responsible going forward. So I appreciate everything everybody's done. The Finance Committee did a great job this year, as is usual, but our, our new chair. And I just think we have to be really careful, because it's a big budget, and we are going, our debt structure is going down. Are we under one hundred and twenty million of debt?
I believe so, yes.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, and then we will open it up to our public for public comment and questions on the budget presentation only.
Brian Fabiano, nineteen Patricia Place. I have a couple of questions regarding the budget. I guess I'd first say, I hope everything's all right with Mrs. Chanley, since probably one of the most important meetings of the year, and she's not here, but it's great to see the two bookends that probably did all the work anyway. So thank you, Dr. Lehman and Mr. Gorski, for all your work on this, as well as your staff. I had a couple of questions. Is the district doing anything currently to reduce medical benefits? So what I mean by that is, a lot of times, the insurers will kickback programs, you know, if you put wellness programs in place, you know, different measures, they'll lower your premium. So that's one question. The next question is, there's additional state aid, the, the state aid per pupil is, there was an increase to previous, you know, obviously, you talked about the, the state aid going up twenty-two percent. I was wondering if there was any analysis done to determine what our increase was versus, you know, towns around us. I know some got more, some got less, kind of where we fell in that spectrum. The next question is, I hope somebody's writing these down, and we'll be able to answer these. The next question is transportation, year over year. My question there is, it's flat, the transportation aid is flat for five years, hasn't gone up. I would assume our costs have gone up, but with COVID, costs probably went down. I know a lot more parents are driving. So with the aid being flat, you know, how are we doing from that perspective? You know, is the district being able to recoup the budget, any, you know, any better with more parents driving currently? I saw textbooks were going up three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, while it doesn't sound a lot to the whole budget of a hundred and forty million approximately. I know a lot of towns are going fully electronic. So are there any initiatives to get the rest of the textbooks out of the schools? I know there's some things that will have to remain, but to see that increase year over year, I don't know if we've had that, those type of increases previous years, so I was just wondering about that. I noticed that the teacher salaries was going up by about a hundred, or about by a million dollars year over year, but there were really not many new staff, so is that just contractual increases year over year? And then my last question was, instructional supplies are going up five hundred thousand year over year. What goes into that number?
Okay. Madam?
Yes, Mr. Gorski?
With regard to healthcare, the district has done a significant amount of cost suppression over the previous years. Number one, you may recall, we switched from Horizon to Aetna. That transition went better than expected, there was not a lot of ripples, and that year alone, we saved one point seven million dollars, offering the same level of benefits with a different provider. This year's increase in health benefit cost was five percent. Our, our claims that came in during this year were unfavorable for the district, and that was. was negotiated down from over 10%, down to 5%. Staff has also contributed to health benefit costs through negotiations and labor contracts. There's approximately $3.7 million of health benefit contributions coming from staff to help reduce health benefit costs. And also, a sidebar agreement with the MTEA years ago got rid of the traditional health plan, which was a Cadillac-type plan that was very expensive, and everybody's making do now with a PPO. There's also other plans coming from the state of New Jersey. There's a New Jersey Educator Plan and a Garden State Health Plan that are designed to attract a younger demographic of employee with different networks and different deductibles that will help suppress costs. As far as the wellness benefits, we've worked with the union in the past to have wellness fairs and things like that. Those savings are already incorporated into the premiums. They kind of expect us to do that. And I believe that satisfies the healthcare piece. State aid per pupil, I have a schedule in my office that shows that it has increased slightly this year, because enrollment actually dipped a little bit, and healthcare, state aid actually grew. So, I think, off the top of my head, it's about $1,300 a pupil we've received in state aid funding, which is terrible. No one's bragging about that. I mean, that barely buys books, you know. Transportation aid is an important topic. I'm glad you brought that up. There is no rhyme or reason on how the state distributes increases in state aid. Some years, they allocate it to new categories like security aid. In the last couple of years, they've just been dumping it all in special education aid, recognizing the state's failure to really contribute enough for special education programs. So, it's all gone there. There's no formula or anything that actually demonstrates that. It's just a category that catches it. Dr. Lehman, would you care to touch on the textbook question? Why are textbook costs increasing in the digital footprint for?
Sure. So, the primary focus this year is the K-5 math adoption. That's a big program. That's bigger than any of the programs we've done last year. So, the, there is a financial kind of differential between last year and this year. We always focus on the digital textbook at the high school, and part of our strategic plan is to take a look at middle school, elementary school, increasing our technology at those buildings. And once we bolster the technology there, we can certainly transition to a, or consider transition to digital textbooks. We have found that digital textbooks are comparable in price oftentimes to the print textbooks.
Licensing.
And the math book specifically that we're getting is actually a six-year kind of interactive workbook that the students get. So, it's really, after six years, it's a full replacement. If it was digital, we'd be printing out, or the students would be printing things out. So, it's a, it's a fine balance. I would say there's not a huge savings between a digital and a print copy these days. Maybe back when we first started this, 10, 15 years ago, you'd get a little bit of a break. The advantage with the digital piece, although all our textbooks do have a digital component, is it's constantly updated, whereas if we have a hard print copy that doesn't get sent to us every year, you know, what, five years old? It's five years old, so.
And I believe there's two other items. Teacher salaries, you calculated a million dollars that they're increasing. Across the board, salaries are increasing on average about 3.25% throughout the whole budget. There's about $65 million in aggregate salaries. So, that's over $2 million for contractual salary increases for all staff, not just to pick on the teachers. And then, with a 5% increase on healthcare benefits, that's another $2 million of budget costs. So, that's $4 million right there between those two categories of cost increase that, you know, we talked about the growth in the cap before, is just not keeping, revenues are just not keeping up. And instructional supplies are going up. There's iPad lease purchases that are included in that category, but the comparative difference to last year is very much influenced by COVID. A lot of instructional supplies were not needed in certain categories last year. Now, we're predicting a normal school year, so there's going to be disproportionate increases in those categories.
I think that's all. So, the only last thing I would say is, there was a comment here about inflation, you know, in that whole environment that we're living in. It's interesting you bring that up at this meeting, but we don't hear that at the meetings when you talk about going out to the town and asking for 100 million, 110 million, whatever it is. See, I brought that up when you had the referendum talks, and it conveniently got left out, and I think you're still not really considering, what is the cost of money today? So, when you go out and bond, right, the process, if anybody understands that, you have to offer higher rates, because with the bonds up, you know, 10-year up, you know, to attract investors to come in and buy those bonds, right, the costs are up. Interest rates are up. Inflation is up. The impact on family households is three times, four times, maybe even more. I mean, inflation, what, maybe they're saying it might peak, maybe it peaked, but 8%, 9%. So, I would just ask this board, if you're talking, if you're conveniently bringing up those impacts at these meetings, remember, those carry over to when you're putting a $100 million referendum out, right? The cost of, to the taxpayers to pay that money back, you know, year over year, outside of what they pay in their, you know, increased tax bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on the budget?
Pete Tofano, 10 Catherine Street. I had a question about the air conditioning unit over at the PAC. You had mentioned that it was $1.8 million. Is, are we replacing that because it's a failed unit, or are we replacing it as a preventative measure?
Madam?
Yes, Mr. Gorski?
The HVAC system at the Performing Arts Center is well beyond its useful life, and it's subject to failure because of that reason. Mr. Teig has tried to budget for it for the last several years, and that's been something that's been cut or deferred. So, it is a large piece of equipment that fortunately can be lease purchased over five years, so we're not budgeting for the full 1.6. We're only budgeting for 20% of that, plus a little bit of interest. And it's in need of replacement immediately, according to Mr. Teig.
And at its worst repair, did anybody estimate what, at its worst repair would be?
I believe it's, it was told to me, it's not sensible to consider repairing it, because it is so beyond its useful life, that at this point, it needs to be replaced. And the sensitivity of that Performing Arts Center and the roof and the ceiling in that room is very vulnerable to problems and mold and issues if it gets damp and wet. So, in my opinion, after speaking to the architect and Mr. Teig, it's time.
Okay. The second thing I want to say is, right now, during your finance meeting, Linda Greenstein is not here. She's actually across the street in the library at the League of Women Voters meeting, but she couldn't make it here during your budgetary meeting. And if her help or lack of help on the funding program was any good, she'd be here tonight beating her drum that she helped you. She wouldn't be across the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty Sabarito, 2 Barrymore Drive. Just a question, is this only for budget or anything on the agenda?
Only for budget.
Okay. With regard to the budget, I keep hearing about whether legislators or somebody's getting credit for the additional funding, and that's a really big misconception. I just want to put it out there. Our additional funding is specifically for special education, and it has more to do with IDA and rights, and also the number of special education students that we currently have in the district. So, that anybody's taking credit for getting us that additional funding is ludicrous. That's it.
Thank you.
Prakash Parab, 33 Dana Drive. Very good budget. I am very happy to see that middle school, y'all are doing renovations. High school, y'all are doing renovations. And I hear that we have enough number of teachers to give education. It's the most important, both for STEM classes as well as special education. And I'm sure y'all are encouraging also for the sports activities. So, thank you very much. Where the gap is in the funding formula, you look like South Bronx Week at Hils Pro get $20 million each in equalization aid, and we get zero. We looked at Ambeekah, one of our Monroe Indians, West Vic Action and Gautam. They looked at the funding formula, and they saw that the populations are similar. And we have less number, but the seniors in our town counts for 40%, okay, whereas those towns count for 20%. Therefore, they have more number of children going to school than us. So, that impacts. And in the, why we are getting this is, the shared, what is called as shared service income, whatever is shared income, is calculated on the property value and income of the people. Naturally, our seniors do pay taxes for property values. That's fine. But the saving, when they have saved money, they are getting dividends, they are getting capital gains, which they may not see also, and that is included in the calculation. So, what, and our children don't see it, because they're not sending the children to school. So, I think the funding formula should not take into consideration of the income of the retirees, because they have saved money, and the income they are not getting every day that is reinvested. So, that correction has to be done. And we have to play diplomacy. Senator Greenstein is not listening. We have to go and diplomatically talk to her, and as well as the governor, mayor, we have to lobby for it. We have to go to, because that is the main gap. And if we do that, we will get additional $10 million, our calculations show. So, we are going to meet Senator Greenstein. We are going to meet. You guys meet, we will also meet. We'll write to the governor. We'll all go to Trenton and talk. I wrote them, I want to speak on the public forum. Now, there is a selection, selection of that. I didn't even get a chance to go to public forum. Anyway, I have one question. For efficient housing now, federal government is giving $5 billion rebate, and they change at both level, air conditioning, furnace, and all. So, if we have inefficient HVAC system in middle school, are we getting any grants there, or any federal or any state, they can pay for it? Because, because of the COVID, we should have efficient system there, first of all. Air conditioning, all should be efficient. So, are we getting any money towards that? And second question is, our $146 million for special education, how much is our budget for special education versus what we are getting from the state? We should get more for the special education. So, what is, those two questions I have?
Madam?
Yes?
The school district does have facilities with antiquated HVAC systems, antiquated windows, inefficient energy systems. And the district has taken advantage of direct applications through JC P&amp;L to replace lighting with lower energy lighting. They come in and they do all of the work and put the lighting in and special bulbs that we have, and it, it's free. So, we, Mr. Teig has done a fantastic job over the years replacing lighting throughout the district. We also have, as part of the Oak Tree referendum, solar panels at Oak Tree where we can sell Shrek's solar renewable energy credits on the Open Market Exchange, selling utility generated by the school building back to the power system. So, where possible, you know, we do take advantage of those items, but the, some of these big systems do need to be replaced with more efficient systems going forward.
The special education.
Special education, I'm sorry, I wrote down special education, but would you remind me your question?
How much is the budget we are spending, you know? Previously, it was $35 million. How much approximately it is? And how much we are getting in the aid from the New Jersey? And, you know, that, can you highlight that?
Yes. To help answer that question, a resident, Mrs. Sabarito, as a matter of fact, asked that on the appropriation schedule, which is identified as letter C, we break out special education costs that are direct special ed with light blue color in the title. Those that are hybrid and can't be distinguished are purple, and those that are regular ed are dark black. So, if you add up the total blue columns, and even appropriate some of the purple, it is far in excess by many millions of dollars over the, you know, $7 million of state aid. And specific for special education is categorical special education aid of 6.7 million, extraordinary aid, which is really not a form of state aid, it's more of a reimbursement of some of our costs, $397,000. So, I would estimate that the district budgets prob, at least three or four times a multiple of the amount of aid that we receive for special education and special ed spending.
I think we have to look into funding formula, how we can change that. Thank you very much.
Yes. And just to add to that, Mr. Parab, the Board of Education has reached out several times to Senator Greenstein. Back in December, we sent a letter asking for a meeting. We did do a community survey for questions, asking for input from our community, and we did get a very detailed question about the equalization aid from the gentleman that you mentioned. And we did send that along to her as well. We've asked for representation on the task force. We've yet to hear back on that. I've asked, I followed up several times on that with phone calls and letters to her office. We're awaiting a meeting date to be sent to us, and like Mr. Chiarella said, she met with residents at Greenbrier last week or two weeks ago, and she misrepresented what the Board of Education was asking her for. She said that we did not understand the funding formula, so that she was waiting for somebody from the Department of Education's schedule to give us a date, because she wanted to make sure that the formula could be properly explained to us. That is not what the Board of Education has asked for. We do understand the formula, and we do understand where it's lacking, and where they do need to make some provision, especially with the equalization aid.
Let her come with what she wants to explain. That's fine. We'll explain where it has to be improved. That's great.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
Sarah Aziz, 3 Lonslaw Drive. I have a question about Appendix C related to the next year's budget. I noticed that on page three, there is a $202,000 reduction in the line under school administration for salaries of principals and vice principals. Is this reduction, this $202,000 reduction, related to Sherri Shanley's move from MTMS principal at a salary of $176,000 to the acting superintendent position at a base salary of $195,000? Does next year's school budget include a principal and two assistant principals at the middle school, or does it include what we have at the current situation, which is two acting principal, co-principals, and two interim assistant co-principals? What does the budget include in terms of principals at the middle school for next year?
Mr. Gorski?
Madam? Specific for the middle school administration, there are two co-principals. They are appropriately budgeted for in the school administration salaries of principals' VP account. As you noted, there is a decrease of $202,000 there. I do not believe that's related to any administrative reconfigurations in the district. More so, that was planning for the possibility of opening a new school building through referenda years past. And there is a cap within the cap. There is an administrative cap on administrative cost spendings, which are school administration, general administration, central services, and administrative IT. Those four categories are considered administrative costs, and there's an allocation of health benefits and things that goes into it also. The budget guidelines stipulate that you cannot increase your administrative spending above the county limit or your preceding year budget. So, the only way to increase administrative spending is to transfer money into the base year budget, increasing the appropriation amount, which then calculates into the cap for next year. It was a directive from superintendents years back, planning for a new school to open, that someday, you're going to have to outfit this school, not only with staff, but with administrators who will run the school. Years past, they had a cap waiver for opening a new school, which is sensible. I mean, you think about all the variable costs that are new when you open a new school that you can't bond for. So, that's the reason why. So, so that, that's the reason why there was an intent to budget more money in the administrative category in principal salaries, which now does not seem to be a projection of, of probability in the next two years. And keep in mind, this budget is a one-year fiscal plan. So there was an over amount of appropriation in that one account that with the thirteen and a half million dollar over cap budget in the beginning needed to be revised.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else from the public?
Good evening. Ramraknat, Six Oven Strive. Thank you to Mr. Gorsky, Dr. Lehman for the very detailed run-through of the budget. Very, very helpful, very thorough. Of course, I was trying to say something is missing in the air, right? Ms. Chanley is not here. Hope she's doing well. Just miss her enthusiasm, enthusiasm and her go-to attitude at the meeting. And I'm sure she probably did play an important role in what we're seeing today in the budget. So I have some few items, so let me just go through that and then kind of wait for the responses. First thing is, again, kudos to Ms. Arminio, right? For getting the town to pay or refund us one point five million for the football code and so on. My question is, are there any items in the budget that could be, we can steal from Ms. Arminio's playbook and try to approach the township to get the reimbursement on? Like for example, the one point six million on the HVAC, is that in scope? So what are the items that could be identified where we can pursue that? Because one of the things is, the tax revenue for the town is definitely growing, it's just not for us from the BOE or from the school board. So I think it'd be good to identify such opportunities and put it in front of the administration. Second question I had was on the, Mr. Gorsky had mentioned that about thirteen point five million proposed additions were not covered when we ultimately got the budget together. Now from that thirteen point five million, do we know what is the opportunity cost of not doing those? For, for me, biggest concern and for many of the parents is really, is our town remaining competitive? When we compare ourselves to South Brunswick, Robinson, Robinswell, East Brunswick, all of them, South Plainsboro, you know, we, we are not there in the rankings yet. Also, when I see the postings as to how many students got, got admissions at Ivy Leagues, it's like a, I don't know, it's not even one or two, I can count with my fingers, right? So that's my question and concern is, what is the opportunity cost of this thirteen point five million being excluded from the budget? Yeah, those are the questions I have. Thank you.
Madam?
Yes, Mr. Gorsky?
When it comes to shared services, particularly with the municipality, the attraction to enter in an agreement like we did with the turf field and the track, is that it's a, an asset shared between the two entities. The municipal government representing all of the community use and the school district with the student use. So that was a beautiful synergy there where the, the field played to both sides and it was very sensible. There is another item that I hope I'm not letting the cat out of the bag, but, but we had budgeted for bleachers to enhance that whole campus. And that was too expensive to be included in the revenue restrictions that we had this year. Maybe we can consider a shared service agreement with township, if, as like a phase two for bleachers. The opportunity costs for those appropriations deferred is a real concern because especially those having to do with a facility nature, construction costs are going up, material costs are going up, interest rates are going up. Opportunity cost is certainly a consideration now more than it's been in the past few years. And as far as our competitiveness with other school districts, Monroe has come a long way in the past twenty-two years, you know, since I've worked here. I, I can't recite the number of AP courses that we had then to what we had now. Dr. Alvik mentioned that, but I think they went up threefold. That all requires commitment from the Board of Education and resources in order to do that. And the problem that I see long-term with the budget is our growth and our facility needs combined with very limited revenues is going to compete with investment in new programs, new robotics programs, new STEM programs. Certainly, the solution to that, in my opinion, would be an address of the funding formula. Monroe needs a new funding formula. That task force is something that we should aggressively with the community join together and promote the welfare of Monroe in a new funding formula. Certainly, there should be a minimum standard of, of per pupil extraordinary aid that should go into that local fair share calculation because public school district has so many mandates, about sixty, seventy percent of our budget is mandated from the state. There should be a minimum contribution for per pupil cost for extraordinary aid to support adequacy budget.
I think I have a little bit more time, right? So maybe it'd be good, along with the budget or subsequently, to include a presentation on that opportunity cost analysis, right? This is what we are not doing and particularly as Mr. Gorsky put it, right? There is going to be future impact for us, right, of not doing these. So one more thing, I see I have some more time. The, actually, if you play back the video from last year's budget session, you may have heard the same question from me, and I forgot to ask that, is, again, our sources of revenue have remained static or the same, right? So why is it that we don't see more ideas or more opportunities, revenue opportunities on the table? And my question there is, is there any incentive for anyone on the administration to actually think about it? Maybe it was not for this year, but maybe we should think about it for next year because there are plenty of opportunities to, other opportunities to create revenue sources, right? So yeah, that's my question. Is that something on the table, something that should be considered?
Madam, just, just very briefly, I'd like to answer the gentleman's question. The district has been forced to look at enterprise-type funds to bring in some out-of-the-box revenues. Falcon Care and ECE has contributed over two point four million dollars of unrestricted revenues to the general fund that was transferred by the Board of Education. And that was designed by administration. It is the example of a merit bonus that the state offers. And no one here asked for anything or applied for anything. It was just done as part of our job. So, you know, we are looking at new enhancements to the programs. Dr. Lehman, the program director for Falcon Care and ECE and Ms. Chanley, we've met and we're talking about some enhancements to, to items like that. Also, Dr. Lehman could speak better to this, but there was a consideration for different summer programs and SAT prep programs and things like that where we could bring in some extra money and serve the community.
So where we stand with regarding the summer programs, we are leveraging, currently leveraging the, the SFR funding, the COVID funding, grant funding that we have. And when we leverage that for staffing costs and material costs, we can't charge because we're, you know, using grant funding. So what we're doing is we're looking at establishing a model, almost the first couple years of a business plan, without the risk of getting something started and losing money. We're, we're establishing a model that when we exhaust the grant funding, we will be ready to turn it over, have a couple of years under our belt and ready to hopefully hit the ground with some sort of revenue stream coming in. So that's kind of our lens with summer programming. We, you know, we're, we're going to basically reroll, and I don't want to steal the curriculum committee's report, but we're going to reroll the summer program again that we did last summer, this summer, maybe enhance it a little bit more, refine it a little bit. And then whether it's this summer or the next summer when it runs out, hopefully we can take that and, you know, we have some solid projections for, again, it's, is it earth-shattering in a hundred and forty million dollar budget? Probably not, but it's enough to start to make a dent. And projects like that, the advertising initiatives, they'll all, they'll all start to add up. But the real change will come in the state funding formula.
Thank you.
Madam President?
And we're also looking at revisiting the schedule of fees for the facilities. So we're definitely all eyes and hands on any revenue opportunities.
Yes. Okay, is there anybody else from the public? All right, seeing none. I believe we have a roll call vote. Mr. Gorsky on the resolution?
Yes, this is the final budget adoption resolution, which was moved by Mr. Chiarella, seconded by Mr. Nikotinsky. Mr. Rudsky is absent. Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mrs. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Biermann?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Final budget adoption has passed. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, our next item on the agenda is our committee reports. Is there any committee wishing to give a report? Mrs. Belko?
Yes. The Curriculum Committee met on Monday, April 11th, and we had five agenda items. The first agenda item was a presentation by Danielle Dress about grade four social studies book adoption. And it's called Social Studies Alive: America's Past. It was a rigorous selection process. All the teachers get to participate and they were very excited, according to Miss Dress, they were very excited in this particular series because it has not only, you know, the textbook with all of the information in it, but it has a student journal, it has a digital component as well as digital teaching lessons and resource guides. It also has lessons and pre-designed blending learning so that they can make differentiated education for those students that need that. The timeframe of the fourth grade social studies, for those who may not remember their fourth grade social studies, but it does include the colonization and the early explorers and it does some revaluation and it introduces civics and economics into the fourth grade students. And one of the teachers had, with this, Miss Dress shared this, she felt it was a very important part of why they chose this, this book. It has excellent map resources infused within the lessons. It integrates art during the different time periods, requiring students to make inferences about daily life, in-depth content, embedded hands-on activity notes, which are also available digitally. It asks students to reflect on the unrest and tension felt by the colonists during the Revolutionary War and has inquiry-based activities for each chapter. So that was one, that was agenda item number one. Number two, we talked about the K through five literacy program. And basically, it's a new program that they're going to infuse over the next few years. It will be available, and Dr. Lehman, please correct me if I, if I misstep. It will be available in the fall to all the teachers. There'll be some teachers that will be getting instruction, sort of train how to teach this. It is an already put-together group of lessons and they won't have to be rewriting lesson plans and trying to figure out. And the goal of the program is to provide consistent structured instruction for the entire district so that what's happening in the K through five at Mill Lake and Woodland is happening at Barclaybrook and Brookside, as well as Oak Tree and Apple Garden. So it's a, it's a across-the-district format so that everyone is getting the same consistent learning and consistent lessons. If you want more information, please, as I always refer to the, the videotape, please avail yourself of the curriculum committee. There's a lot more information there and provided for you. The third item was the summer reading lists, and those were also presented by Dr. Kelly Rozell. She presented the K through five literacy program also. And so those lists are, are, will be out there after approval tonight by the board. I took the time to really sit and read a lot of the descriptions of the, the reading for the, for all of the different grades. And there's some very interesting topics and subjects and some books for all the different grades. I think they did a really nice job of, of finding some great appropriate items for the summer reading lists. Then we had, number four was the summer program, but Dr. Lehman stole my thunder. He talked about it already. The goal is basically to model the same program that we, we did last year with the same setup and the same architecture, as well as one of the favorites last year, and Dr. Rozell was almost giddy about it coming back, is the Book Club Beach Bash. It's a mouthful to say. But she, you know, they were all, they're all very excited about coming in and then there're talk, there is talk about the summer camp postings and we were posting for, to possible teachers for it. And once we have that, more information will be coming out for that. The fifth thing on the agenda was a presentation from Dr. Higgins referencing senior option updates and things for seniors. So there's some new partnerships coming out with Middlesex County College, Kane University, University of Delaware, which we had a, a large presentation, a few committee meetings about. So we're trying to bolster senior option where seniors can take some more college classes at some other very highly respected universities and schools. And for a decreased price, they can graduate with college credits towards certain, certain things at the high school level. They're also investigating another senior option where right now our seniors have the option of early out. One of the things they're investigating is sort of a late in. So there's a lot of our seniors who, they have, they do sports, even though they do early out because they've made all their credits and they have, they do sports and things. And so they wind up coming back to school at two-thirty to participate in sports and to clubs and different things. And I, I'll just speak from personal experience. I know a child who would have early, you know, late in as opposed to early out because she did exactly that. And so it's another option. They did a survey of the students. They, you know, did get some results, but, you know, they're going to continue to look at that and see what, what it's out there. So that is my curriculum committee report for April.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Um, just one quick thing regarding the summer program. And I know Dr. Lehman and I know also Mr. Merl does a fantastic job, as well as other supervisors. I'm wondering if there's a way that we can get the word out, and obviously not this year, but in the future, earlier. A lot of parents make their summer plans early. You know, summer camps, day camps can be very expensive, but sometimes parents may not have another option. And I know that we had great registration numbers last year, even getting it out later in the year. But I'm wondering if we can get it out earlier, if that's something that might help improve our numbers as well.
Yeah, absolutely. We had, we had really good numbers last year. We maxed out many of the sections. Obviously, getting out the earlier, the better. This year, we are confirming funding for it, just to make sure when we advertise that we can advertise correctly. And we're also confirming staffing. So the goal moving forward, obviously, to put it out a little earlier, but that's kind of our timeline right now. So we're in the staffing process. Once that's all confirmed and we, we confirm our funding, we will go public with it, with the official dates and planning and registration process.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, is there any other committee reports wishing to go? Mrs. Fabiano?
On Tuesday, the community, Tuesday, April 12th, the Community Engagement and Communication Committee met.
Can we get closer?
Sorry, can you hear me now? We, like Mrs. Kirby mentioned earlier, that we did not hear from Senator Greenstein yet. We have called and emailed, but have not received a response. We discussed the advertising update. Mr. Merlda shared the templates of some signage that was developed and everything looked amazing. So thank you to Mr. Merlda for working so hard on that. As of the meeting two weeks ago, there were over one hundred and thirty viable leads in the database and more than half were reached out to. Then Mrs. Chanley talked about the chain of command, that she shared various examples from various districts and will be working to have it uploaded to the website, hopefully by the end of the school year. And lastly, I shared that I had had the opportunity to speak with Dr. Feinsad, who is the Director of NJ SBA, about his initiative for a senior council while he was the superintendent in Cranford. It was more or less an effort to engage members of the community who may not have the same opportunities as those who have children in the district, who get to spend more time in the schools. So we discussed ways in which we can incorporate an idea that's similar to that and will continue to discuss avenues to bring more community members into our schools. At our next meeting, we're going to review the results of the communication survey and dive further into the idea.
Anybody have any questions for Mrs. Fabiano? Okay. Ms. Arminio?
All right, we had a policy committee meeting and we, it wasn't very exciting, but my committee members were sort of bored. But anyway, that's because we went through four bylaws. You know, I thought we, that we should review as board members, we should review our bylaws because that sort of gives us an idea of our, the way we proceed as board members. But we did not change any of the bylaws that we talked about. But we did talk about the duties of the treasury of the school, of, of school monies, duties of public account, of the school accountant, contracts with independent consultants. and collective bargaining, and contract approval ratification. None of those, we put them on the table, we just, we reviewed them, and there were really no changes. Tonight, we have the Road Forward as a first reading. I'm going to have Dr. Lehman talk about that in a minute. But we did discuss, and we did put it on our agenda for a committee review, the use of school facilities. It is not on tonight's agenda because we really didn't formulate how we wanted to go forward with it. We had a lot of discussion, and it sort of is in conjunction with some of the things that we talked about tonight for the budget. We have a provision in the use of school facilities about classifying users for the facility, community users, students, of course, and some community-based, community-based events and community-based users. And we're sort of doing a reverse shared services in the past. Like, for instance, the Cultural Arts Commission, we charge them for use of the facilities per year. But we are going to raise their class status, and they won't be charged. So it's a reverse shared services, and sort of goes to what Ms. Fabiana was talking about. A lot of our seniors avail themselves of that, as well as the Mighty Oak players. Again, it's, it's non-government, but it's a community member. They will not be charged for the use of the facility. So again, we want to say thank you. We want to give back to our community members, who of course pay taxes, and as has been mentioned, don't have children in the school. But let's face it, we all have a stake in the quality of our community, and this is our response, and we're trying to show that we, we are all, you know, one happy community. The other part of that, the policy and regulation, is that we are, for other, for other outside rentals for our facilities, we are starting to talk about raising some of our rentals. Apparently, we are under our competition by a great deal, and we're actually, I don't want to say losing money, we're paying, we're paying for the costs. However, we think we can raise our standards a little bit and perhaps bring some money into the system. So we talked about having, having the change in the fees go to finance, and it already has gone through Buildings and Grounds. The Buildings and Grounds Department decided that it was a good idea. They moved it toward, to policy. We're going to move it to finance, and then it'll come back to policy, and we'll work that out. So that's an ongoing discussion, and that was it for our Policy Committee. I'll ask Dr. Lehman to, to discuss the one and only first reading. And also on our agenda, I'm sorry, Dr. Lehman, I do this to you every time. I ask you to speak, and then I just don't let you. There are other policies from last month that are on for a second reading, so once they are approved tonight, they will be then revised in our policy books. Thank you, Dr. Lehman.
So the first read on the Road Forward document is, the policy was shortened to make reference to the plan. There were no changes to anything in terms of masking, anything. The policy itself previously was 22 pages. It was cumbersome to get through, cumbersome to read, difficult to understand. It was a living document, in a sense, and I think over the past two years, it really just turned into a difficult document to navigate. So we trimmed it down. It's, like I said, it's two pages. It makes reference to the plan. The plan is what should be the living document. It's what should be able to be kind of tweaked based on conditions and things. But again, nothing substantial is changing. No changes to the plan. Masking remains the same, you know, everything is the same. Any of those changes would be discussed with the Superintendent, with the, you know, county health officials and things like that before we made any changes. We just wanted to simplify and make it easier to navigate and understand what's going on with our protocols and policies and things.
Thank you. But one of the things we did try to stress at the Policy Meeting was that we will be adhering to any executive orders that come down or anything. So I just want the public to be aware of that. Thank you.
And Michelle, if I could just make one comment on the use of school facilities with the, where you mentioned about changing the fee schedule. The Mighty Oaks and the Cultural Commission are currently a, I think it's the tier-one user or class-one user that is not currently being charged.
No, in the past, they had been.
In the past? Yeah, I just, I, I just wanted to clarify that we were not changing to give them free use. That was done many years ago.
That was done. I can tell you, the last time this was revised, I believe it was just last year in January. But it is still, we maintain, yes, January of 2021, and we wanted to still maintain that as a shared services.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Arminio? Okay, no. And our next committee report? Mrs. Bierman?
Thank you. Finance Committee met on April 11th. The first item we discussed was the monthly review of the attorney fees for February. That total was $28,427. Of the categorization, the Oprah requests were at $11,355 of that number. The members expressed concern about the volume of documents, the related cost to the district, and we did have a robust discussion on that during Finance Committee meeting, which of course you can see on the video if interested. Next item was the review of the bill list. This is item A on the agenda for Board Action. This is for March 8th through April 7th, total of $15,143,033. The Committee, of course, recommends approval. We did have discussion about concerns that bills were still being paid in between Board meetings in accordance with the resolution that's made at the annual organization meeting. And we are still in the process of getting verbiage straight to sort of organize that a little better and put a little bit more foresight on the bill list prior to the bills being paid. Hand in hand with that is the third item, a discussion of software system products that are being investigated by Mr. Gorski. He's looking into requisition software that would help improve the process so that there's a little bit less stress on the procurement cycle, and that the Board could get a little bit more of a chance to approve the bill list before the checks are actually mailed out. So that software, we're looking at a module through the current accounting software provider, CDK. There's a software package that would be $9,650 for the first year, and then $2,935 for subsequent years, and they're still doing a tech review and viability to make sure that it would fit in. So more to come on that in future meetings as we get information. But the goal is that we would implement some software and systems to help expedite the administrative process, to give the Board its proper oversight to the approval of the bill list. Next item for discussion was a Staples donation of school supplies. There's, this is item B on the Board Action. It's a proposed donation agreement with Staples of English Town, where school supply kits are provided to the district's students. I think it goes through the high school, and they're handed out to students in need. The Committee recommends Board approval on this item. Next item was a Schwab charitable donation. This is item C on Board Action. Mr. Gorski presented a charitable consideration from Schwab Charitable. The Committee recommends the resolution on the agenda be approved. And then, of course, we had our final budget discussion, which now has passed, so we have no real need to beat the drum on that one, and that concludes my report.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, Ms. Bierman, for the next Finance Committee meeting, if we can, what I'd like to know is, if bills have been paid before the Board approves those bills, how long has that gone on for, which I understand it's gone on for years, and that the Board President's signature is being affixed to those bills to pay those bills in advance without the Board President actually reviewing those bills in advance and then signing off on them themselves? The reason that I'm asking that is because there was a meeting a few years ago when Dr. Kozak was the Superintendent, where a big deal was made by that Board President that some Board members left. A couple of those Board members were asked to leave because they were conflicted by the Board President. She asked them to leave, and so then they were denied a quorum. And then she made a huge statement over the next couple of meetings about the bills not being paid and trips not being approved, and harming kids, and all that stuff. And now it turns out that, I'd like to know, were those items already paid for when we went into that meeting that night? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chiarella. And yes, I, I would like us to look into that as well, and I will put that down on the list of things to look into. I can let you know that in January, when I noticed that a bill was overpaid to one of our vendors, I immediately after that raised the concern, and since then, I have not authorized my electronic signature to be put on any checks written by the district other than payroll, because payroll is a contractual obligation that does not change. I have been asked to come in, sometimes several times a week, to sign checks. I've reviewed invoices. I've let the Finance Committee and the Superintendent know about my concerns of late invoices, late payments, all being paid prior to Board approval. So yes, I feel that that is a very large issue, and I do agree with you. I would like to look into that as well, to find that out, because that was a lot of controversy brought to our community blaming Board members for having things canceled that probably, if we look back, I would like to know if those were paid prior to that meeting as well. So thank you for that. Does anybody have any other questions? Michelle?
Just a historic comment on that. I had no idea we would bring that up. But after that meeting, despite all the hullabaloo, I was told by our, the Council, Mary Smith at that time, that there's a 60-day window for paying invoices prior to, after that. So that delay was not a critical delay, as I understood it. Now, Mr. Gagliari, if you allow him. If that's, if that was not something that was correct, I, I mean, that's what I was told afterwards.
So, thank you. I don't know what the situation was with those particular bills, but you wouldn't find anything in Title 18A, for example, that says school districts have 60-day windows to pay bills. It depends upon the nature of the vendor, so I can't comment on that particular one. But is there a 60-day window? As a general rule, there is none.
Okay, that's good to know. See, we got, we got a lot of interesting information. Let me just put it that way. I do have a question, if I may, on tonight's issues. The CSI Software Support Renewal Agreement. I did review this over the weekend. So it looks like there's, there's annual fees of...
Michelle, that's part of Board Action, so wait for his report. That did not get presented in Finance Committee.
Oh, I thought you just said you're looking for software to enhance. It's different than this?
This is a renewal that's been thrown on since.
Okay, do we have anything that you talked about tonight's?
No, just a soft proposal. There's two items in...
You said software, and I read software.
Yeah, there's two items that appear on Board Action that are not part of the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from Finance? Mr. Nikotinsky, your personnel report?
Personnel med, April 11th, and we went over the vacancy list exit survey, and there is a Supervisor of Special Education on the agenda for tonight. And there's going to be a new job posting for a Supervisor of Elementary Curriculum. And we touched on the non-affiliates, which we'll bring to the Board next month, an update on that. That's it.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Nikotinsky? Ms. Arminio?
I do have a question. The new job description, a Supervisor of Elementary Curriculum and Instruction, is that a absolutely brand-new position?
Yes.
Okay, could, could you explain, because we are not privy to the Committee, the Personnel Committee, and there really wasn't any description on the Board Doc. So other than the job description, is there a justification as to why that position is necessary?
I'll have Dr. Lehman explain it.
Sure. So it is a new position. It's something that, through the organizational scan, Ms. Chanley is looking at reconfiguring currently, but also in the long term, some of the administrative positions. And this is a stepping stone that will assist the K-12 Supervisors in their role, their current role of the kindergarten through 12th grade curriculum side. The one thing the Supervisors have wanted to do and not been able to do, and it's a function of our growth over the past 10 or 15 years, is get into elementary classrooms and support across the board, math, science, social studies, in the classrooms. Our building administrators are in the classrooms. They're managing the buildings. But one thing with the K-12s is their observations are six through 12. They're in the classrooms doing formal observations at the middle and high school level. One area that we have a weakness in and a need is administrative support in the classroom across the board curricular-wise at the elementary level. So this position would help us support all the elementary levels in the classroom, help the teachers in terms of resource acquisition, help the teachers in terms of instructional support programming. It's a step in, it's a well-needed, long-overdue position, and it's an opportunity for us to really support the elementary level.
Aren't there already Supervisors in the K to, K to what?
So the...
Six.
So we have K-12 Supervisors. Their primary focus is curriculum K-12, but in the classroom, they're in classrooms six through 12. They, it's like we're rolling out the new math program next year. We need, we need an administrator in the classroom to help out the building principals and to help out the K-12 in the implementation of that new program. Same thing with social studies, and as we talked about, ELA as well. So this administrator would support that in-classroom instruction, coaching, resource acquisition. It's more long overdue for supporting the elementary teams, administrative teams in this area.
I know. It still sounds vague to me, but, so the, this is across the board? This is for the entire district?
Yep, this is one person that would cover all five elements.
And they won't be doing any teaching?
Nope.
So just along those lines, because I know you had mentioned one thing they'd be doing is helping to roll out the, you know, the math curriculum and things like that. If I recall, the certification is for elementary school, is K to five or K six? I know it was changed at one point. I forget what it is. But I guess for that person, you know, if they're helping to establish the math curriculum, they're not necessarily going to be a math expert. So in that sense, wouldn't you want somebody who has more of an expertise in the math subject area to be helping out with that, or is this...
It's a, it's a broad position, just like a building principal or an assistant principal. The principal, any, any of our administrators have broad instructional support. So this would be at the elementary level, this person in the job description you guys have. We're looking for elementary experience. We're looking for broad curricular experience. We're looking for instructional support. So I used math as an example because that's what's happening next year. So supporting Mrs. Gasko in this rollout would be one of the tasks this person would do next year. As we roll out an ELA program, they would support ELA. As we rolled out a science program, they would help support that as well, with the goal of, at some point, having a reconfigured administrative presence. You know, we are a very large district. We are understaffed administratively. If you look at the observational loads of our administrators relative to our peers, it's significantly higher, and it's the daily operational, sitting in the classroom, getting the formalized feedback, then having the pre- and post-conferences, takes a tremendous amount of time, as opposed to the sitting in a classroom giving the informal feedback, working on professional development and supporting the teachers. That's the core of how our staff is really supported and how they grow professionally. That's the core of how our staff is really supported and how they grow professionally. We are bound and we're bogged down in the, in the minutia and the operational pieces. And we, because we have the timelines, we have the requirements to get all these observations done, to get all the paperwork done, we need to relieve that pressure, and this is a step in the right direction.
I guess my only other question to follow up is, I know that some of the elementary schools currently share vice principals.
Yep.
Was it looked at, I guess, creating it so that those people would be in the same buildings more often? Because I know, you know, you get familiar with the people that are in your building, you would create that relationship and camaraderie, whereas, you know, I can't imagine being in charge of six schools, all the teachers there. So I was just curious if that was something that might have been considered?
Again, everything is interconnected. As we relieve the pressure, just like when we talk about building schools, if we relieve the pressure on one side of town, it inherently relieves the pressure on other sides of town because we can bring students that are displaced back to their home school, right? So everything's connected. If we support administratively at the elementary level, the observation load, just for example, of a vice principal and a principal, now gets relieved a little bit, now they can get out and support the teachers more. It, everything is interconnected. So yes, it makes sense that, you know, when I first started, we had an assistant principal in every elementary school. Now we have one shared between sister schools, ideally. We actually have one assistant principal that's shared between three schools. So the more we can do to relieve the pressure valves, because we've been continuing to grow, and we just, this is an opportunity for us to support our administrative team as well.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Borah? I just have a quick comment. I had similar questions, and I reached out to Mrs. Chanley and Dr. Lehman before the meeting, and I just want to, you know, express my support for this position. Based on what you explained right now and what you'd explained in the email, it's about time. We're a really big district, and already the elementary school classrooms are not getting that level of observation, which they are warranted, but because our supervisors are so overwhelmed, I, I'm very thankful that this was put on the agenda, and I'm hopeful we'll approve it tonight. I also have one more comment, Madam President. Like you just said, the people who are not on the Personnel Committee, they don't get the minutes. If we could upload that for the board members going forward, so that we, you know, some of these questions would just get answered by reading the Personnel Committee minutes. Thank you.
I just have two matters of clerical notice. Number five, under qualifications, it should state required criminal history background check and proof of U.S. citizenship or legal resident alien status, not of. That's the one thing. And then my second clerical issue is, should this not be in vote for nine, since this is an elementary school position, as opposed to vote for 10?
It would be just strictly elementary?
So this is an elementary, elementary position, it certainly can be in the nine, nine vote?
It currently sits as, at F in the 10-vote position.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Belko.
And I, I-
Ms. Arminio?
Yeah, I had a second question. On our position for, where is it? Supervisor of special education, I know last year we were unable to fill an already open position, is that what this is this evening?
Yes.
Okay, and it, and going to the, these are important positions, and I was hoping that in the future we can go into closed session prior to these kinds of votes, so we can get extensive understanding of what this is, and again, the reasoning behind some of these new positions and some of these other positions. It, you know, hiring, the board really hires people, the recommendations are from the administration. I would like to hear, I think the full board should be apprised of what the recommendations are and how they arrived at, at the, at that recommendation. Mr. Nikotinsky, if I may ask, how many, I know last year there were quite a few people applied for that position of special education, how many applied and what was the process? Was it the same committee process as last year?
Yeah, I believe so, right.
Can you?
We did have a similar process this time. This is our third, third process that we went through for the same position. We, we went through two rounds last year, two rounds, full rounds.
Right.
And then this was the third time. So in aggregate, we've probably interviewed in excess of 40 candidates, and that was first round interviews, which are typically about 30-minute interviews. We bring several candidates, anywhere between two to four candidates to the next round, which typically lasts 45 minutes to an hour. And then candidates from there are brought to the superintendent's level for another round of interviews. And depending on the candidates, sometimes one person's brought, sometimes two, and the final decision's made at that level. So it's an extensive process.
And this was in AppleTrack? Everyone applied through AppleTrack?
Everyone's through AppleTrack, yep. All applications are noted.
Internal and external?
Internal and external, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, now seeing none, that concludes our committee reports, thank you very much. Our next item is our public forum for agenda items only. Anybody wishing to speak has four minutes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. I want to talk about Oprah, because I noticed in the finance that that was the first thing you spoke about. I watched the committee meeting, and I know that there's been a lot of Oprah conversations in your meetings, and a lot of it kind of sounds like digs. I also noticed in the finance committee meeting, there was the, sounded like you wanted to call out members of the public or advertise people who are making Oprahs. The thing I find interesting is that the board president here now was the biggest Oprah requister previously to being on the board. And I know it because she sent me her Oprah requests. I know it because I Oprah'd the Oprah requests. So I, so what has changed? Well, we said we want to change the Oprah process to bring it into Mrs. Chanley's office because we wanted more transparency. Fact of the matter is, we went the opposite, we don't have transparency. Oprah requests now are taking four times as long as they used to take in the past. An Oprah request that was seven days, 14 days, now takes two months, okay? So there is no transparency. In actuality, Oprah requests are being prioritized to who's putting them in, what the agenda is, what the request is, and if they are going to potentially produce information that is not for, you know, that's not for the board. So those, those requests are being denied or, you know, less prioritized. You talk about money of the Oprah request constantly, about the cost. The fact is, and I talked to two of the most prominent Oprah attorneys in New Jersey, one of that I have actually retained, the costs of Oprahs don't go up with the amount of requests if you're doing the Oprah process correctly. Your custodian is trained, and, and through two Oprah attorneys, they said less than 5% of Oprahs actually have to go to an attorney in most districts. We are sending nearly every Oprah to, to the attorneys, and that's because, and you can see it's coming back with case law. So it shows that when the Oprah process was moved, obviously our custodian that handles it right now doesn't know what need, what, she has the ability to filter and is sending everything through the attorney. So of course the costs are going to go up. I thought it was interesting, though, the attorneys that I spoke with said, you know, are, are the attorneys you're using, have they ever given political contributions in the past? Are they padding the bills? But here, I'd ask you this, what has changed in the last four months with the Oprah process? This administration? Why are people putting in Oprah requests? Could it be that multi-year board members are out in the public saying, Mrs. Skirby did great last night? Even at the end, at 2:00 a.m., she was willing to stand in the parking lot in 17, 17-degree weather to convince me to F over the Booster Club. So she has her agendas, laughing out loud. Dowling messed up, but Chrissy and Shari seized the opportunity to screw over the kids. Other comments made by multi-year board members in the public, do you think this would create people to come in? Vendettas, vendettas, vendettas. The board president, Mrs. Skirby, is co-superintendent at this point. Mrs. Chanley is not running the schools. Lawsuits are piling up. Another multi-year board member.
Excuse me, Madam President, can we please ask the speaker to lower his voice and speak with decorum? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you stop, you just stopped my time. I'd like to reset to 40 seconds, please.
Please continue.
You have other multi-year board members speaking in the public, that you have members of this board leadership speaking about special needs families and what they're doing to get their kids sent out of district, and passing judgment on what kids should be able to get if they need to be able to go out of district. You have multi-year board members saying publicly that all of this is vengeance against certain people and situations, and the board president and acting superintendent are seizing on the opportunity. Maybe is that the reason why Oprah requests are up? Is that the reason why people in the public want transparency and we're exercising our rights under the law to put in Oprah requests? It was okay when members of this board put in Oprah requests to file ethics charges against administrators, it was fine then.
Thank you, your time is up. What I would like to say is none of what you read can, is-
148 pages right here, you want to read it?
No, I don't.
From your board members. I'll give you the copies.
I want to say, it wasn't me. Maybe we shouldn't name names.
It wasn't you, Ken.
Thank you.
Your allegations, excuse me, you're out of order. You're out of order. Mr. Gagliardi, would you like to speak on behalf of the Oprah request that your law firm has been seeing and the uptick since we've changed custodians?
Respectfully, I don't think there has been an uptick since you've exchanged custodians. And I, I, I don't know what attorneys that you spoke to, so my assumption is that they were giving you general examples as opposed to suggesting that there are political contributions in Monroe Township as to which we've made none.
I'm not accusing you of that.
Okay. But I, I also would say this, not, not just to Mr. Fabiano, but any member of the public, I am unaware of any Oprah request that had, that received no response for a period of multiple months. And if that, if that is happening, obviously, I certainly invite the administration to let us know so that we can assist in responding. If the requests are voluminous, the requesters may not get the documents within seven days, but they get a response that says, you know, here's what we can give you, but the other things, you know, I, I have seen requests recently that go back many years, in some cases looking for documents that are maintained, not within the central office. Those take time. So the law requires, to my knowledge, the board is following, the response to the requister saying, here's what we're doing in order to fulfill the request. It will take longer than the provision in the statutory provision, but you're allowed to do that, as long as you're explaining to the requister. So I'm not aware of any that are going unresponded to at all, but happy to assist the administration if that is in fact the case.
Which it is not.
They didn't say they were going to respond.
Excuse me, you're out of order. No, Mr. Fabiano, you're out of order, you had your time to speak. If you cannot contain order, you're going to have to leave.
I'm happy to-
Is there anybody else wishing, excuse me, you are out of order. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Betty Sabarito, 2 Barrymore Drive. I wanted to address two things on the agenda. The first one is with the retirement of Coach Kathy Dillon. And I'm the leader of CPAG, the Special Education Parent Advisory Group, and this is a tremendous loss for this district, so we want to really congratulate her. CPAG values Coach Dillon and all of her work and efforts tremendously. She has been one of the few people in our district to always champion the needs of special ed students, and few if any in our district have done as much for special education as she has. We are extremely grateful for her placing special education students on the map and spreading the message of inclusion and positively impacting the lives of so many of our students. She is a strong advocate for all students, and we will forever have gratitude for how much she has done for our district, specifically our special ed community. We wish her the best of luck, and we wish the district the best of luck in replacing her, because this is going to be a huge task. To that effort, I wanted to speak about the supervisor of special education. Mrs. Arminio brought up, you know, the whole process, and we were very vocal last year when we were not okay with the process, and we had some questions about it. I will say that, thank you, Dr. Lehman, thanks, Mrs. Chanley, they did include CPAG in the process. We believe the process was done correctly, and we also believe that Mr. Anthony Arcaro is an optimal candidate for this. We really hope that you guys approve him. His background has shown that he's a big advocate for special education, he's a great educator, he's really vetted in our town because he's been in, well, he's, I think, a lifelong Monroe resident. He came very well-prepared, and we wish him the best of luck. If you do approve him tonight, Mr. Arcaro, please count on all of our support on behalf of CPAG. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Regina Giacominie, 27 Bar Drive, president of the MTHS Booster Club. That was not what I came here to discuss tonight, but since it was brought up-
This public forum is for agenda items only.
No, 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 no. Remember, everything that you say from this point forward will be used in not only an ethics violation, but possibly a criminal investigation.
Excuse me, Mrs. Giacominie, it is on agenda-
I would like to reply to what he spoke about, about policy.
It is about agenda items only. If you're speaking to the agenda, you may continue. If not, you can come back at the next public forum.
Okay, so how come the new position, even though it's a K through 12 position, does not require a license to teach in New Jersey? Shouldn't this be a position held by someone who owns that license?
Dr. Lehman, would you like to explain that?
Supervisor position?
Yes.
So the supervisor position should have a supervisor and/or principal certificate in the state of New Jersey, that's the requirement.
Okay, is it also going to be a requirement that they taught those grades at some point in New Jersey?
We're looking for elementary experience.
Elementary experience as in teachers or as in administrators?
Either way, we're, during the interview process, we will screen candidates, we'll interview them, we'll discuss whether they have an understanding of the elementary pedagogy, they have the understanding of implementing professional development with K-5 teachers, we'll vet them through that process.
Okay. Just, you know, just a thought, though, the Board of Ed is not a place for vendettas. And the fact that all of you thought it was funny to fuck over the Booster Club says a lot about this board and your character.
That was not said, that was not an agenda item, it was never said, that is not the opinion of the Board of Education. I don't know who that is from, it is certainly not from myself. Excuse me, you guys are out of order, thank you. Mr. Parab, would you like to speak?
Prakash Parab, 33 Denard Drive. You guys are elected, and you are all doing a voluntary service here, okay? So thank you, what you all are doing, okay? It is after the work, after the family, taking care of the family, doing your job, and you all are doing good job, good job. So this is a compliment I'm giving. And one thing I'll tell you, I looked at recruitment, you know, student enrollment, okay? We have added in the last four years 127 students. So again, I'm saying our growth is plateauing, okay? But our apple garth is working at 178% capacity, MTMS at 37% capacity, 137, Oak Tree at 152%, High School at 135. So we are overcrowded. It's a high burden to our teachers, high burden to everyone, we are overcrowded. So how is, what is the, you know, my question is, hope the referendum, everything is going on time, and the plans of the referendum looks good, so go with that, okay? And that is on the agenda, okay? And cultural arts, we spoke during the committee meeting, you know, so that is on the agenda. So cultural arts, if I understand, they charge fees for the ticket, $32, $45, okay? If the cultural arts is giving a free for the public to come in and watch the programs, then it is okay, you don't charge them. You go to senior center, after 4 o'clock, senior center gives it to the, some other nonprofit organization, and we have to pay $700 or something to have a function there and more. So consider that, if cultural arts is giving free, then don't charge. If they're charging $40 or $50 per ticket, where the money is going, okay? So I'm not against cultural arts and anything, but shared services also, you know, we taxpayers are paying for the school, you know? So nothing is free here, okay? Thank you very much. If you have any clarification on that, please do, do so.
Yes, and the, any fees charged for the cultural arts events are not being charged by the school district. That would be going through the Cultural Arts Commission, and that would be a fee then going to the township.
Okay, so it goes to the township revenue-like?
I'm sorry?
So that money, whatever the profit goes towards the township?
If there's an entrance fee for an event being held by the Cultural Arts Commission or the Mighty Oaks, that is going to the township, not to the school district.
So, okay.
And the school district is not charging a fee to use the, the facility.
Okay, but our security officers who are there-
Are paid by the school district. Are paid by the school district.
School district, so pink or red. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Ziestri, Lonsalot Drive. I'm concerned about the events that transpired during the last finance committee meeting. It seems that board members do not understand the importance of the resolution that they unanimously voted for in January that authorizes the business administrator to make contractually required payments in between board meetings. The board hired a new independent auditor to make sure that our payments are timely and accurate, and that all payments have the appropriate legal authorization. At a recent board meeting, the independent auditor gave our financial statements its highest opinion. They said that our internal controls were excellent. Our business office has been recognized by the county for its financial best practices and has achieved a fiscal management rating of 100% in its CUSAC score from the state of New Jersey. In spite of that, the board is racking up legal fees, paying attorneys an hourly rate in an attempt to find ways to limit the authority of a business administrator who has a record of 22 perfect audits. This is an incredible waste of taxpayer money. Board members want to strip our business administrator of the authority to make contractually required payments, including debt service payments, in between board meetings. This could hurt our credit rating and result in the suspension of services needed by our students and teachers. I don't understand why the board paid over $50,000 to an audit firm only to reject their opinion that the business office led by Mr. Gorski produces excellent work. Stripping the business administrator of the authority to make legally required payments in between board meetings does not hurt him. It hurts our school district and our credit rating. Furthermore, there are board members who ran on the platform of transparency who are now complaining about Oprah requests after some of these requests have revealed information that is embarrassing to the board, most notably how the board's own choice for acting superintendent failed to earn the recommendation of the county superintendent who advised the board to appoint someone else to this position. Furthermore, the board needs to make the fiscally responsible decision and hire an in-house salaried attorney to handle its major legal services, including Oprah, and should not give the appearance that they are waging a war on transparency. I also want to ask about the new advertising initiative. I watched the Community Engagement and Communications Committee meeting, and during the meeting, it seemed that there were five sponsors willing to purchase advertising on our school property, but there was no dollar amount given. So how much revenue are we talking about that these five sponsors are bringing into the district or projected revenue? Furthermore, how much will this new position of elementary supervisor get paid? What is the salary range for this position? And I would ask that somebody who is in this position be certificated to teach K-12 students in the state of New Jersey.
Dr. Lehman, would you like to answer?
First question regarding the advertising initiative. So the current project has 40 signs available for $1,000 each, and that is our current project. It's in the early stages of recruitment and acquiring potential customers, and it was, we have five very favorable leads. As soon as we close the deals, quote-unquote, close the deals, you know, we would certainly have everything board-approved, and that's when all the commitments and things will be finalized. There's a high profit margin. Our sign costs are very, very low, and everything will go right into the general fund, and we'll be able to allocate any of this revenue and/or future projects that are developed. And then hopefully this turns into a very lucrative program, because I know we have a lot of community interest in terms of being partners with us in our school district. And maybe that sign isn't their ideal target, but in, in the outreach and the conversations with potential leads, we're hearing what some other interests may be, and that will drive our future opportunities. The starting salary is just about $106,000. That's the entry-level number for a supervisor position.
Okay, and, but someone with a lot of longevity would be paid more. Is that correct?
Potentially, potentially. Yep, but the starting salary is, again, starting salary is 106, and then if there was somebody that came in with an extensive amount of experience or something, we would take a look at where they would potentially fall in, in a salary scale. Yep.
Does the board have any plans to hire an in-house salaried attorney?
No, we do not. In fact, when the board had looked into that and we had interviews, it was, it was uncovered that there's only eight school districts in New Jersey that actually have in-house attorneys. And they themselves were wondering why Monroe wanted to bring somebody in-house. The board has decided last year not to go with an in-house attorney at this point.
All right, because our, our legal fees at this hourly rate are $80,000 more than new school budget than they were last year, and certainly more than when we had an in-house attorney. And so it would have seemed that we have legal needs that are probably greater than other districts.
No, that is not, that is not true with the in-house salary compared to what we are paying. Your figures are incorrect.
I think, I think, I don't think so. I disagree with you.
You can disagree, but the facts are, are facts.
No, we're paying over $200,000 in legal fees next year, and we paid less when we had an in-house attorney. And certainly Oprah request shouldn't be costing us, and people who make them shouldn't be, you know, named and shamed. There are other ways to save money, and, you know, changing a resolution that's been in place for years, when we have perfect audits year after year, is a waste of money.
Mr. Gagliardi, would you like to discuss how school districts should legally pay their bills?
So the, the assertion that we have been asked to eliminate the discretion of the business administrator to pay bills between meetings is not accurate. The resolution as prepared many years ago has no parameters, right? So there's no dollar limit, there's no requirement that it be urgent, that it be necessary to avoid a deadline or excess fees or what have you. So what we were asked to do, and what we've done, actually, and it doesn't, didn't require a whole lot of time, I should point out, was to propose for the board pursuant to guidelines that were discussed initially with Mr. Gorski, what it would, what we would do to change the resolution to create some parameters so that the board, number one, had some idea what authority was being ceded to the administrator, since it is the board's authority to begin with, which it can cede to the administrator, but statutorily, these are the elected fiduciaries of taxpayer money. So that the board would understand what authority was ceded, the business administrator would understand what authority he had. And lastly, without regard to any limitations, and in response to the board's and the public's discussion about transparency, when that, when the bills are presented to the board, as it has been done historically, neither the board members nor the public have any idea what bills have already been paid and what bills have yet to be paid. And so our third and final recommendation was that there be some distinction made so that the public and their elected fiduciaries had some idea what was going on with the public's money. That is consistent with the law and with our considerable experience in representing school districts throughout the state.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam President, may I have the floor to address this issue?
No, Mr. Gorski, we're in the middle of public forum. Is there anybody else from the public wishing to speak?
Ramraghna Sixo in Strive. Couple of things. One, again, my statement about the 1.6 million for the HWAIC and approaching the township. All the discussions I heard really made me even more stronger in making that request, you know, particularly if we are not charging and so on, and the revenue goes to the commission and, but just a statement I want to make. Madam President, you know, it's unfortunate to see the attacks at today's meeting. I just want to remind you that the member of the public, we have supported you. You were voted in with one of the highest votes, so just remind yourself that the majority of the public is behind you, and we're looking for this board to really move forward and do a lot of good things for Monroe. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? No, we will close public forum. Our next item on the agenda is the Assistant Superintendent's Report. Dr. Lehman is going to do both his and the superintendent's report this evening.
So I just wanted to welcome everyone back from the spring break. I think today is probably one of the harder days for all of our students to return from. It was a long haul getting to spring break. We had a couple months of very few breaks and things, and it was intense. So I think it was a well-needed and well-earned break for the, for the staff and the students, and thank you guys for coming back. Everybody seemed to be relatively cheery today in terms of the students and stuff, so welcome back. It's a downhill slide to the end of the school year. We have approximately two months. It's hard to believe May is coming up, but it's an exciting time of the school year. We have the beginning of the end of the school year, so we have, you know, senior award nights coming up. We have a bunch of concerts coming up, and it's, it's an exciting time. We have our Teacher of the Year, award dinner and things, so as busy as it's going to be, we just hold on tight, and we will get through and enjoy the warmer weather that we have coming, so. And it definitely wasn't this past week, but it will be, it will come. I know it will come. So I'd like to recommend for approval Personnel Items A through T for the 10-member vote.
So who? Second. Is that her?
Yes.
On this floor, she's not here. You can, Madam President, if you want, you can designate a secretary to protect for the purposes of conducting the vote. The Assistant Board Secretary.
Okay, I will appoint Mrs. Bierman, our temporary board secretary, to take our roll call.
Motion was by Ken Chirrell, seconded by Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
Mrs. Belko.
Yes.
Mrs. Bierman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bora.
Yes.
Mr. Chirrell.
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
And Ms. Ratner.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
And Mr. Ruski is absent. Motion passes.
Outstanding. So for the next section, I'd like to recommend for board approval Personnel Items U through AZ for the nine-member vote.
Move.
Okay, Mr. Gorski, that was moved by Mr. Chirrell and seconded by Mr. Nikotinsky. When you're ready, we can have a roll call vote.
Madam Chair, is this Personnel Items U through AZ?
Yes.
Nine-member vote?
Yes.
Moved by Mr. Chirrell, seconded by Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Bora.
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano.
Yes.
Mr. Chirrell.
Yes.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Ratner.
Yes.
Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So under Board Action, I'd like to recommend for approval in the 10-member vote, letters A through I, but we're going to move F to the nine-member vote. So this is A through I with the exception of F.
So who?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Gorski, if you have a...
Are we allowed to ask a question if we have?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just had a quick question, I guess, regarding the, the road forward, and I know this is a very comprehensive plan, but I also had noticed that there is still live streaming going on, and I was just curious with that, if that's something that's going to cease at some point, if we're looking for certain numbers to be down, because obviously it is a cost both for, you know, you know, everything.
So numbers, even with this little, we'll call it a bump, have been favorable, way, way lower than they were in January, like significantly lower. We do, like, like I said, have a little bit of a bump. I'll send out the notification on Thursday for the past two weeks. I did not send one over the spring break, so the next report will have two weeks' worth of data. The perspective we have right now is if we are requiring students to not come to school because they're COVID-positive, then we would, we would do the home instruction. When we get to a point where we are treating this as come to school when you feel better, like we treat it like it's the flu or an ear infection or something like that, then that would go away. The sooner the better, in my opinion. I'm not a, obviously not the medical professional to make those decisions. That has not been a movement in, that we've seen educationally yet.
Right.
They haven't gotten rid of the waivers or anything like that that we're using for the home instruction, but that would be the trigger for me.
Okay.
In terms of instructionally.
I just, I don't...
If we're telling them they can't come to school, we need to provide the instruction. As soon as that goes away, and you come back to school and you feel better, then we get rid of home instruction.
I guess my question then is, like, if someone is home next year with the flu and they have a fever, they're not allowed to come to school, is it just strictly because it's COVID and there's been, obviously, unique circumstances that we're providing instruction? Whereas if they were home for a week with a fever, generally speaking, we wouldn't really provide that.
Nope. So home instruction is home instruction for everything else except for COVID. And that's because COVID has that exception, has that different treatment right now based on what we've come out of for the past two years. And that's not a local decision. That exemption, that allowance is, is something we're allowed to do from the state. Either that goes away, or we make a decision as a group to just treat COVID as the flu, and you come back when you feel better. And then we can get, my perspective, we can get rid of that home instruction.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Lehman, did you want to mention about the, the funds that we got to cover the home instruction?
Yep, so we have ESER funding, and we're waiting for the second level of approval at the state, but once that, once that's approved, our ESER funding will be covering the vast majority of any home instruction costs that we've had this year. So it's a very good thing that it's not coming out of an unexpected general fund pull or anything like that. And that's actually the intent of the ESER funding, was to support districts in anything that was above and beyond what we would have normally spent. So that's very positive. That's a good thing. Again, we will make that official once we get the second level of approval, and it's really a rubber stamp at this point, but we don't make any assumptions or anything like that until we get the notifications.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay, Mr. Gorski, if we can have a roll call.
Board Action Items A through I with the exception of F. Moved by Mr. Chirrell, seconded by Ms. Belko. Ms. Bora.
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano.
Yes.
Mr. Chirrell.
Yes.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Ms. Ratner.
Yes.
Mr. Ruski is absent. Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then the last segment that I'd like to ask for approval for is, on a nine-member vote, Board Action Items F and then J through P.
Motion.
F and then J through P.
Second.
Okay, and does anybody have any questions? Comments? No? Okay, Mr. Gorski.
No. No.
No? You're good?
I'm good.
Okay, if we could have a roll call, please?
Board Action Items F and J through P. Moved by Ms. Belko, seconded by Ms. Arminio. Mr. Chirrell.
Yes.
Ms. Ratner.
Yes.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano.
Yes.
Ms. Bora.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So before Madam President does her report, I just wanted to take a moment. We have several retirements that I just wanted to recognize and honor their years of service and all of their contributions with a huge thank you. The list starts with Ms. Kathy Dillon, and, you know, we've had a member of the public speak, and her contributions have been beyond describable, have touched the lives of hundreds of children, and we will miss her greatly. We have Ms. Nicolette Homer. She's a math teacher at the high school. We have Ms. Sue Finkelstein, a special education parent professional at the middle school, at the high school. Ms. Sandra Beatty at the high school. She is a custodian. She is a custodian. Mr. Robert Lawrence, a driver of transportation. Mr. Ed Namowitz, security here at the high school. We also have Ms. Nancy Markwell, a teacher of mathematics at the middle school. We have Mr. Bart Mix, a teacher of math at the middle school, and Mr. Brand Lutzka, a media specialist at Mill Lake. Every one of those teachers I can, uh, and staff members, I can see their faces. They will be greatly missed. They've had in, positive influence on all of their colleagues and touched many, many children's lives, so, um, I'd like to thank them, wish them luck in the future, congratulate them on a, on a career with us. And, uh, one last congratulations is to Mr. Anthony Accaro, who is the new supervisor of special education. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you, Dr. Lehman.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is our Business Administrator's Report. Mr. Gorski?
Yes, thank you. I would also like to not choose a favorite here by any means, but congratulate Mrs. Kathy Dillon on her, her well-deserved retirement. Uh, it's rare you see anyone in the district who not only has such enthusiasm about their program and contributing it to it so immensely, but to, to follow it through the whole cycle and, and seek grant funding, which covers a lot of the unified costs, um, to very significant extents. And it's just a pleasure working with her to put the resolution together that we furnished to the board ahead of time, uh, all the way through the end of the grant process where the money comes in. So it, Mrs. Dillon, it's a pleasure working with you and collaborating with you over the years and I wish you the best. I would also like to address the bill list issue. Um, I, I tried my best to remain silent, but, you know, my staff is being impacted by this as, as well, and so is the morale in my office. So I'm, I'm going to start with number one by saying that all the bill procurement and payment methods that have been enacted by my office under my supervision have been appropriate, lawful, and, uh, with authority from the Board of Education. If the Board wishes to put bumper guards on the payment of checks, which is the very tail of the process, it is not the $140 million budget that you just approve unanimously. This is the disbursement of checks after you've received the services and goods that have been appropriately encumbered on a purchase order that only the business administrator can sign. And a lot of these items, and the reason for the resolution authorizing the business administrator to pay bills in between meetings, is the fact that you have contractually previously approved resolutions authorizing lease purchase agreements, um, debt payments, utility bills, and other items that you have a 100% obligation to pay. So that is the reason that the business administrator with this resolution that Mr. Chirrell asked the question has been in place for at least 30 years. I didn't invent this. I carried it forward since I took this position back in 2010, and it's been approved, I believe, unanimously by the Board ever since. So I want to re, I'll leave it at that, but I want to state that everything has been proper, legal, with full authority and authorization from the Board of Education. And I'll stop there as, as, uh, hoping this conversation stops, because it, it seems like a, a terrible attention diverter from a lot of other things that we're hearing from the public tonight, other than the business administrator.
Mr. Gorski, can you please get to the business of the administrators' recommendations?
Um, um, this is, the bill, bill list is part of the BA report. At every meeting, you approve a $15 million bill list.
That has already been paid and mailed out.
And this is a big issue to you, so to quote you.
And that is a big, that is not a big issue to me. That is a big issue to this Board.
I've made my point. Madam President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through E be approved by consent roll call.
Motion.
Second.
Beg your pardon, who's the motion?
Motion.
Second.
Questions? Go ahead.
I have a question from before. Um, Mr. Gorski, the CSI software support agreement, we already use this software? Sir?
Madam, yes ma'am. CSI is the software provider for the HR and personnel packages.
Okay.
As well as the attendance, uh, staff attendance packages.
So it's a continuation of what we already use?
Yes, ma'am.
And there's, what, four? Are they all four different costs? So for each department or?
Each, each segment of, uh, the service that they provide, yes.
Okay. Um, I, I have a question that's not on here. Um, I'm attending two days of New Jersey School Boards that we are registered for. I don't know if anyone else is registered for. Has, have we proved that already?
Few months ago.
Okay. Good. I didn't know I, I registered that far in advance. Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Ms. Bierman?
Um, so I have a question. On nine-member vote, I think Item I belongs on 10-member vote. That's the CDK Systems contract for $7,395. It looks like it's for accounting software. I don't think it's exclusive to the elementary grades.
You are correct. The CDK software provides accounting software that serves all levels. In my opinion, it should be a 10-member vote.
Okay, so that should be shifted. And also, these contracts where they are annual, I don't understand why they wouldn't have appeared two weeks ago in the Finance Committee so that we could have had the comparison of the cause, if anyone had any questions or whatever. It's not that it's not going to be renewed or that we're not going forward with it, but the Finance Committee would appreciate having the opportunity on agenda items that can be addressed during committee, being given that opportunity in the future. Thank you.
Mrs. Ratner?
Yeah, I just had a quick question in regards to, I guess, charter school payments. I saw that there is a rather large payment to Hak Tikva. Um, is that something where we are paying the, the full tuition, um, for, for charter schools? Um, I just wanted to confirm that. And is that just for one student or is that for multiple students?
Madam, um, Hak Tikva charter school is not just one student. Um, it, it's a significant number of students. It's a, it's a several hundred thousand dollar expense and it's growing every year. Uh, it's not as big of a problem for Monroe as it is for East Brunswick, who dedicate a significant amount of their budget toward, uh, those programs, but it is growing and it's one to keep an eye on as you're doing.
Thank you.
And these, if I, if I may, these are state mandated. We have to pay this for the charter, charter schools. The charter schools actually rob our, our, our district from much-needed funds.
Right. We get no funding and then we have to give it to them anyway.
Exactly.
And then we have to pay for transportation, too.
Yes.
If they don't show up on the out-of-district school list? Just curious, like we should have been able to see on the out-of-district school list, right?
I just noticed it in the bill list.
If we had students that were going there, or are they different for some reason?
I will verify this. They are not enrolled in our, the out-of-district are, we still have a, we still have a attendance kind of monitoring piece to it. I believe they're not enrolled, just like a private school student or something. They wouldn't necessarily be on our records, potentially. I can verify that.
So, Dr. Lehman, to confirm, if they're not enrolled, then we're not getting any funding for them at all, as opposed to a special education student that may need out-of-district services?
That's right.
Um, you know, a private, a private school student, we don't pay the tuition for private school, but charter schools, we need to do that, even though they're not considered our students?
Yeah, I can, I can verify that for that one particular school.
Okay.
Um, and that would explain why it's not on the out-of-district placement piece.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Gorski, can we have a roll call?
Board Action Items A through E, including contract renewal for CDK Systems previously identified as Letter I on the nine-member vote. Moved by Ms. Bierman, seconded by Mrs. Fabiano, if I, go quickly. Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabiano.
Yes.
Mr. Chirrell.
Yes.
Ms. Ratner.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Ruski is absent. Ms. Bora.
Yes.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Madam President.
Uh, yes, but I recuse on Letter E.
Recuse on E, thank you. Motion passes.
Mr. Gorski, I just need to also recuse on the bill list, just for the NAFMI membership for Mr. Ratner.
So noted, thank you. Motion passes. Madam President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items F through, um, F through H, we're going to exclude I, be approved by consent roll call.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Gorski, we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Ms. Ratner.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano.
Yes.
Ms. Bora.
Yes.
Mr. Chirrell.
Yes.
Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski. Uh, next, we have President's Report. So as the Board has been informed, we will be having a special meeting on May 19th at 7:00 PM for the purposes of our superintendent search. The search closed on April 14th, and to date, no one on the Board, including myself, have been privy to who applied through the New Jersey School Board's website. Our field representative, Mary Ann Friedman, will come to our meeting on May 19th to present the candidate pool to the Board and advise us on the next steps. I want to reiterate what has been said here at many recent meetings. Mrs. Chanley has been employed here in Monroe Township for 19 years. She has never lied or misrepresented herself in any way. The issue with the middle school yearbook was investigated under a different Board leadership, as well as looked at again by the County Superintendent back in November, and there has been no wrongdoing found by Mrs. Chanley. Furthermore, any reimbursement that Mrs. Chanley has accepted from the Monroe Township School District has been in accordance with the outlined procedures in the collective bargaining agreement that has been negotiated with prior Boards many years ago. All reimbursement to any staff member, including Mrs. Chanley, required Board approval. There are strict guidelines in the agreement for reimbursement that protect the district if a class is not passed by the employee or the employee leaves within a certain amount of time of the reimbursement. The reimbursement of Mrs. Chanley for tuition that the district is required to pay per the collective bargaining agreement is not what is infuriating. It's the hypocrisy of those who took part in the agreement to now try and insinuate that she did something wrong by accepting what was contractually available to her, as well as all employees. It is categorically false that there is a pool of money for reimbursement, and once it is gone, no one else can get reimbursed. It is categorically false that Mrs. Chanley being reimbursed for tuition caused some other employees to not get their reimbursement. For reimbursement, employee needs to get the prior approval of the superintendent. You need to successfully complete the course and show proof of completion, and you can be reimbursed only a maximum of 12 credits annually. Mrs. Chanley has followed all procedures set forth by this district. To claim otherwise is an outright lie that is fueling a disgusting and unprecedented character assassination of a 19-year employee for no other reason than to manipulate the current superintendent search taking place. All of this is counterproductive to the success of the Monroe Township School District, and it is very sad to see what a few members of this community is doing to our schools. We should be focused on the education of our students, fighting for more fair funding, yet all we are doing in our community with a few individuals is attacking a 19-year employee that has given her life and dedication to the students in Monroe Township. That is my President's Report. The next item on our agenda is other Board business.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes, Ms. Belko?
Um, I too want to add my name, um, to the list of those that, um, I want to congratulation, congratulate on their retirement, um, particularly, um, the three that I personally have worked with over the years with my children, um, Ms. Markwell, Ms. Hummer, um, and especially Kathy Dillon. Um, Ms. Dillon has been a staple in my life and my children's lives, including my general ed students who were part of her programs as a, as gen ed students to support the Falcon Pals, including when she began working with the elementary schools and bringing that program that she's got here at the high school down to the, to the, to the lower levels. They went, um, and I spoke of my daughter earlier who came back, and that's what she did as a senior. That was her post, you know, her opt-out in, in the afternoon was to opt-out to come back to school, uh, pretty much. And, um, she's just an incredible, we are definitely going to miss, um, her energy, her ability to, um, have people do things and they don't even know it. Um, she's amazing and she's such a support to the other teachers in the district who really want to learn and really, I've seen a lot of teachers in this district grow from her leadership and her ability to do the things that she has done. Um, I really, um, congratulate her. She's, it's well-deserved. Um, you know, my daughter's going to miss her terribly, but, um, we will, we will do. Um, I just want to say one thing is, um, thank you for your report. Um, I think you were spot-on. And I, all I have to say is that I would wish that the people who do come to the podium to speak to this Board do so with, um, respect, professionalism and decorum, and to please not raise your voice. I do this as a volunteer. I spend many, many hours post this meeting, reading, um, you know, and, and making sure that I go through the bills and making sure that I go through everything, because the oath that we take every January is an oath to protect and be fiscally responsible to the state of New Jersey and to, uh, to assign to the state of New Jersey our oath that we will protect the monies that this township gives us to provide the, the education and the, uh, programs that we provide here. And I want, I, I feel that this Board is an incredible steward of the monies and how the monies are being spent, and I think if the general public really knew some of the things that we know, they would be, um, surprised. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Bora?
I want to start by echoing your thoughts, uh, Mrs. Belko, that, um, this is not personal. We're all here doing what we've taken an oath to do to the public that has put us, uh, put their faith in us and put us here. Um, it is not personal. I want to end with that. Um, and then I want to again echo, um, the sentiments expressed by Dr. Lehman and again, um, by the CPAC leader and also by Mrs. Belko about Mrs. Dillon. Um, she's put us on the map this year. Monroe is going to be in the Special Olympics in June, and Ms. Dillon has a huge role to play in that. I personally got to know her this year just because of that, and I have a huge amount of respect for the job that she does every day. It's not an easy job. She puts her heart into it and she's brought so many smiles just to my face in this few short months that I've known her. I wish her a lot of success. Congratulations. I don't know how she'll stay away from these children that she's been with so many years, but I hope, um, she has a beautiful, um, a successful retirement. I also want to give a personal shout-out to Mrs. Nancy, uh, Nancy Markwell. She leaves a legacy behind, uh, in middle school math department, and I wish her a lot of success. Um, again, these two were my personal experiences, but I wish success to all the staff that is retiring this month. I also want to take a moment today to commend, uh, Dr. Rozell and the staff in the Language Arts Department, uh, that put together the summer reading list. And I will take a moment to speak to the things that really stood out to me. Um, once this list is put on the website, this, uh, the public will get to see it themselves, but what stood out to me this time was the diversity in the summer reading list. I was happy to see topics that, um, at all appropriate age levels, that included Juneteenth, Gandhi's impact on nonviolence. There were biography and autobiographies of Ruth Bader Ginsburg, um, Grace Hopper, Chavez, Malala Yousafzai, Houdini, Trevor Noah and Muhammad Ali. Such an, such an diverse mix of personalities that the kids can read about. Uh, there were, there were stories on multiracial families, there were stories on segregation, um, Indian mythical gods, gender equality, Me Too movement, physical and neurological disabilities. The list goes on with the diversity, um, in the topics in the summer reading book. Um, and to my amusement, there was a book that talked about Bollywood, the Indian counterpart of Hollywood. of Hollywood. And like I said, I was quite amused to see that. The book spanned the breadth of our country with a good mix of various states, but some of the countries that were talked about in this books were all, in these, in this list of books was also amazing. I saw Vietnam, India, Sudan, Poland, Iraq, South Africa, Russia, and Korea, to name a few. So our children are going to be able to see the world through the summer reading list, and I think that is commendable. Besides the popular and acclaimed authors that normally make the list, I was also thrilled to see a variety of other authors of Asian origins, specifically Indian, Chinese, Korean, African, there were African authors, and also Middle Eastern authors. I'm thrilled with this list, and I encourage parents to work with their children to identify the topics and books they would benefit from reading this summer. I'm also looking forward to participating in the neurodiverse universe, universe reading activity this week at Applegarth School with some of the fellow board members. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Ratner?
Yes, so Ms. Bora, what you had mentioned about, you know, her not forgetting students, I have to tell you, that's something that all teachers get to experience, and it's absolutely wonderful you just remember them. I just found out one of my students, I started teaching, had a baby, which makes me feel really old, by the way. But, you know, I happen to know Ms. Dillon, even though I've never had any personal experiences with her, so that's truly a testament to the impact she's had on Monroe. I also, you know, my personal one is Mr. Letzka. I don't think I've ever seen a more energetic media specialist in my life. I can think fondly of some of the Millay reading nights, and, you know, he, as well as everybody else who is retiring, will be missed. I was wondering if it might be possible, and this is something we can probably talk about for C and C, I know that upcoming in, you know, end of April, May, and early June, there's a lot of concerts and performances in the district, so I think it might be wonderful to get a list out of those events to the entire community, perhaps get them to some of the senior newsletters, just something that crossed my mind as we were talking about it. I, I know some of our other board members are attending the NJ SBA symposium over the next couple of days, so I'm looking forward to some professional development. And then the last thing, just because I know that this had come up, just so I can, you know, maybe shed a little bit of light on it as a cultural arts commission member. First of all, I think it was Mr. Rankinoff, I don't know if he's still here, but he had mentioned the idea of shared services for the PAC, which I think might actually be a wonderful idea because so many members of the community use it. We use it a lot for cultural arts commission, we use it for a lot of other community groups as well. You know, I know that even my grandparents used to rave about going to the Marasco Center, so that might be something worth looking into. And then the other thing, just so you know, a lot of times those ticket costs go towards the performers. I think Mr. Parab had asked that. So, you know, a lot of these performances, they can cost in the thousands of dollars, so, you know, the cultural arts commission doesn't actually make a profit on anything. It all goes into funds with the township, and then if there's any extra funds, it's used towards the next performance. But I just wanted to shed a little bit of light on that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I just want to congratulate, I guess, right, all of our great retirees and Bart Mix and everyone, we've done a lot of negotiating over the years with him and the, you know, the MTEA. I also would like to just, just say a couple things, you know, because we heard a lot tonight about former board members or board members posting stuff. It's pretty funny that the same board members that are posting stuff were presidents of this board and never did the things that we've been doing, and now are complaining when we're not doing things up to a new standard that they create in their minds. Like, oh, how come they don't have the links tonight up? Why isn't that link up? Well, they never had a link up to, to the, to board, live board meetings and things like that. So I find that pretty funny. I also think that it's pretty astonishing to me that they negotiated the MTAA agreement, and now they're on the other side of it, making believe like they don't know, and that we're doing something nefarious and evil with our superintendent in order to give her secret money when they approved that. They, they were part of the negotiating team that, that negotiated that. So that's pretty funny. And what I would also like to do is remind our public that when you come here, that this is not some bar in Appalachia where you just drop the F-bomb and scream at people. Just think about that before you come up there, because that is disgusting.
I'm sorry, I was a little-
You're out of line, I'm up right now.
I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Apologize later. Thank you. And I'm done, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Chiarella. Anybody else? Mrs. Fabiano?
I also want to congratulate all of the retirees that have served us well for all these years, and just a couple of other things. I want to thank administration of Mr. Gorski for hosting a budget training for myself, Ms. Bora, Ms. Ratner, and Ms. Skirby. You were also present for that. It was very informative for us to sit down and learn the intricacies of the budget. It was a suggested meeting for us from NJ SBA, so we appreciate the time of all of the administrators. And I also am looking forward to reading at Applegarth School on Wednesday, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we will go to our next item is the public forum. Anybody wishing to come has four minutes. Please state your name and address at the microphone.
On April 5th, I was, we were invited to watch my son Matthew perform in the special needs concert by Ms. Siegel and her, and his teacher, Ms. Ballard. I, I just want to thank them for the efforts that they put in for that. Students were so happy that they were on that stage, and there was people crying in the audience, there were parents that were just amazed at the performance that they put on. And again, I'd just like to thank Ms. Siegel for the work and her staff that put the work in for that concert. The unified music program, I think, should be amplified any way possible. Like I said, the students and the people in the audience were just so happy that these kids did such a great job, and I'd just like to thank her again. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'll start by apologizing.
Name and address, please.
Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. Come for a cup of tea anytime. I've always been passionate and loud for you and against you, and I think you all know, I voted for every person on this board, everybody. And actually, I was the biggest proponent for Shari Chanley, as many of you know as well from the beginning. I can't speak for what other people do in regards to Shari Chanley or any other administrator in this town. I can only speak for what I'm told. I supported Shari Chanley. I supported Shari Chanley before people on this board, multi-year people, told me what was going on behind the scenes. Told me the risk that was being, that was being put on the district by not only Mrs. Chanley, but by the board president. So you might say, and that's fine, you can call me anything you want, see, I don't have an obligation, flipper, whatever, but these are things that you told me, not, you know, and, and I don't want, you know, Mr. Chiarella to take, that wasn't Mr. Chiarella, but board administration, you know, leaders here that are the ones that are saying all this information. So I appreciate Mrs. Belko saying, you know, we're, you know, we're tied to an oath, and we take an oath when we're sworn in. Well, if that's the case, why aren't you speaking out when you have board members that are saying, behind closed doors, you're putting the district at risk with the way Mrs. Chanley and Mrs. Skirby are handling the business administrator? Why aren't you speaking out when they're publicly saying, there's two ways that Mr. Gorski's going to go, in shackles or tenure charges? How do we know this as a public? It's people sitting at that table. How do we know that Mrs. Chanley is carving out a back door for herself if she doesn't get appointed for the position of permanent superintendent? How do we know that the search is being opened back up? And a leader sitting here is the one that said it. We're opening the process back up so Chanley can apply, because she didn't, she didn't. We're not even considering her for it. We'll repost it, Shari can apply, we'll go through the same stupid process again. How do we know that? And you sit here and you, you know, you talk about ethics and what you do, and how can you sit here and look, parents, listen, I'm not a part of the Booster Club. My kids aren't that old, they're not in the high school doing sports, but how can you sit here when you take an oath in the beginning of your term and say you represent every kid? You're out campaigning that you represent everybody, but then you can sit here and not address when people say it was publicly stated by members of this board that at 2:00 AM, deals were being made in the parking lot to screw the children over? I don't get it. So you sit here and you, and you, and you, and you say, you know, the members of the public, I'm not talking for other people, I'm talking about me. I'm passionate, I don't come here to scream at you, I come here to speak what's right, and I, and I've supported all of you, and I was loud when I supported you, and I'm loud in what I don't think is right. And these are things that come from you, but when we bring them up, we're shunned, we're not supporters, we're thrown off face. I don't care, you could throw me off every Facebook page you want, but I want to know why you know that our district is being subjected to potential lawsuits, why you know the superintendent is involved, acting superintendent, the board president is involved, and you won't speak You preach your ethics, you preach with the oath you've taken, but you won't speak up. And you have people saying, it's all a backdoor deal for Shari Chanley. I'm disappointed.
You can come up to the podium, and you could read whatever you want off of a piece of paper that you created.
That's my right as a public, you don't have to-
Excuse me, you're out of order. You can come up, you could make up whatever tales you want at this podium, you could make up whatever text messages, like we had-
Here, here, a bunch of 48 pages.
Mr. Fabiano, please, you're out of order. Okay, but, but to-
And I have, sir. I have shared in their entirety my communication with you.
I'll have a charge on yourself then.
Excuse me, and there are things-
But then Mrs. Skirby would know that it's not made up then. If you shared it with her, then Mrs. Skirby would know that it's not made up.
Excuse me, you're, you're out of order, Mrs. Fabiano, and there are-
And I guess I should probably share with others also, because I don't like the edited version that comes here.
I'm giving you the unedited right here.
Excuse me, you're out of order.
It's fine, but maybe we should share the comments about your wife, about her running mates. We can go through the whole thing, Brian.
Let's do it. I like to hear that. Let's do it. Administrator going out-
Excuse me, it is, you are out of order. That is not, first of all, you come up here and make wild claims to board members about things that only you are privy to, things that you are confidential information, you are privy to by your spouse, okay? And then you try to project that-
I'm sorry, I have not released any confidential information. I am drawing the line there, there is no confidential, you are not going to accuse me of releasing confidential information.
Okay, that is under, yeah, well, we will-
Under investigation, go ahead, please tell me if it is.
You are out of order, Mr. Fabiano. Mr. Fabiano, you are out of order. Excuse me, can we have security, please escort Mr. Fabiano out of the room? This is unacceptable behavior. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Yeah, but I'm waiting this to finish.
Go ahead, Mrs. Giacominie.
Regina Giacominie, 27 Bard Drive. First, I would like to apologize for cursing earlier.
Excuse me, Mr. Piro, I asked if you could please have him escorted out. He's out of order, please, please leave.
It's my right to report, I'm not talking anymore, you call for this.
It's a vote. Go ahead, Mrs. Giacominie.
Are you sure, or do you want to, like, finish this first? Because I don't want it to cut into my time.
Go ahead.
Okay. First, I would like to apologize for cursing earlier, but I was a little agitated after hearing Mr. Fabiano's comments, and it was really nice if you'd have called me out for it while I was sitting in the audience and couldn't respond. My question actually is, now that I know that it was done for vendetta, would this be considered an example of theft by conversion, where a person takes money for their own purpose rather than for the purpose the owner originally gave permission to use it for? And remember, anything anybody here says, I will use in an ethics violation or a criminal charge after I speak to an attorney now. So at this point, I would like to request three things from this board. One, that one of the board members put forth a motion to return $1,927 to the Booster Club, now that you know it wasn't done because of policy. And you can claim whatever you want, but I just saw the text message that he showed me, looked pretty real. Number two, I think an investigation should be started to review this matter by a outside organization, because apparently can't trust the people sitting here. And number three, the board president and the vice president should be removed from their positions of power since they are using their positions inappropriately. Now, you can respond, you don't have to, but like I said, remember, anything that you say, I will use that video. That's it. You guys have a great night.
Mr. Gagliardi, would you like to again address the issues of the Booster Club money that this board, nor me, nor Mrs. Beerman, were any part of any discussions by the administration? Could you please explain again why that money went to our general fund?
So maybe he could also explain-
Excuse me, I, you're done now.
No, 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 I have two minutes left.
No, you're done now. You're done now.
No, I'm not, I have two minutes and 23 seconds. This is your policy, not mine.
You asked a question, and I'm getting you an answer. Would you like the answer or no?
First, I would like to ask, I would like to ask a follow-up question that he can also respond to at the same time. When originally it just happened, Dr. Higgins from the high school spent, sent me an email stating that you said that it could be returned if there was a motion passed by this board and voted on. After that, I was told that there would be no motion because Mrs. Chanley decided against it, which is what she said at the last board, at one of the board meetings. You can go back and check the tape. So are we supposed to listen to the advice of the board attorney, or are we supposed to listen to Mrs. Skirby's best friend?
That's inappropriate.
So is everything you've done tonight.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that I have the skillset to address everything that's gone on here in the past few minutes, but I'm going to respond to the questions. So the issue with the money was that because the process of approving that arrangement hadn't been followed, to allow that money to go to the Booster Club or, or any other entity, this is not a value judgment from my opinion on the work of the Booster Club, it would be an inappropriate diversion of public money, that's what I said, because the fiduciaries of the public had not voted to permit that. I don't know, in terms of your follow-up question specifically, what you're, you're quoting, but at, at the core, I, I think you and I agree, which is that absent a board vote, whatever happened can't be changed, because it's the board that's elected to determine what happens with public money, which is how we got into this position in the first place.
Okay, so I was supposed to ask Mr. Dowling then to give up his building usage, because he has building usage of the facilities, because he's the athletic director, and allow me to put in my own rather than working with the administration as per multiple conversations? Is that, like, would that have made it better?
As an outside organization, if you want to come in and do anything inside our school buildings, you need building use approval. No outside organization, to my knowledge, has ever collected door fees for any of our athletic events, that has always gone back to the general fund, and that was what was expressed by the administration back to the high school and Mr. Dowling. Correct, Mr. Dr. Lehman? If you were part of those meetings, would you like to express that there was no wrongdoing, vendetta, this was our policy? Mr. Gorski was involved in that meeting, if I, if I'm correct, that explained the processes-
Mrs. Skirby, can I just ask if you could please fix your skirt?
Excuse me? You know what, you are completely inappropriate.
I'm not being rude, I'm asking you nicely.
Excuse me. Seriously.
Your skirt rolled up, I'm asking you nicely, that wasn't rude.
You know, when this is over, I'll come back.
But that wasn't meant to be rude, I'm sitting here.
I'll have all ethics charges against me, you all can. I'm going to the bathroom, I'll come back.
Okay, I'm figuring she's on camera, I was trying to be nice.
I'm on camera too. If you can't be civil, I'm going to leave until you can.
That was civil, I asked her to please help. That was not being rude, I'm serious. It had ridden up.
You know what, that's it. We are going to adjourn, we are going to close public forum now.
No, no, no.
Yes, now, we're, we're closing public forum now.
Really? Is that allowed in your bylaws?
I'm sorry. Public forum is closed.
You can't close public forums.
I have a right to speak.
Yes, I can.
No, I don't think-
You know what, Michelle, this, I will adjourn the whole meeting if I have to, but we have a closed session that we need to get to.
Yes, ma'am, but I, public forum, I, I really think it is, is a wrong decision.
We are not, it is not their right.
How about we vote?
Mr. Gagliardi?
It's not against the law.
Does it, something that needs to be voted on by the full board, or is it subject to board president approval only?
So whether you look at your own policies or Robert's rules, the board president controls the agenda. If the board wants to continue public forum over the board president's decision, it would take the majority of the board to do that.
So do I need to make a motion to continue the public forum?
If you want to continue the public forum, you can make that motion, someone seconds it, the board had a discussion, and the board votes. If a majority of the board wants to continue the public forum, it can, if not, the board president, who controls the agenda, is free to do exactly what she did. You are not obligated to have a second public session that goes on beyond a particular period of time. It's the board president's decision unless the board majority votes otherwise.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public portion.
I will second that motion. Any discussion? Mr. Gorski, roll call.
Mr. Ruski is absent. Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
He's not here.
Been noted as absent. Ms. Bora?
This is very difficult, given what we are observing today, but I have been elected by the public, and I will vote yes to continue the public forum.
Thank you.
So noted, Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
No.
Mrs. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
No.
Ms. Beerman?
No.
Madam President?
No.
Resolution does not pass. It's a four-force tie.
Thank you.
Resolution, going closed session?
We're going to take a five-minute recess. Excuse me, you're out of order.
Yeah, I know.
We're going to take a five-minute recess before we do our closed session resolution.
You guys sat and had me all night, and now I'm out of order.
Welcome back, we're back from closed session. There's no action to take, so we do not have any additional business, we don't have a closed forum.